Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. April is Jazz and Poetry Month, and we have a proclamation here. If you would kindly indulge me, I will read it. We don't have anyone here to accept it today, but we will have some performers from the Barbara Ingram School coming to some future council meetings to entertain us in celebration of National Poetry and Jazz Appreciation Month. Whereas National Poetry Month, held in April, is a month-long national celebration of poetry established in 1996 by the Academy of American Poets, and whereas National Poetry Month was inspired by the Black History Month in February and Women's History Month in March, and aims to highlight the legacy and achievements of American poets, introduce the public to the joy of reading and hearing poetry, advocate for poetry to become a part of the school curriculum, increase recognition of poetry, and generate philanthropic resources for poets and poetry; and whereas each year publishers, booksellers, educators, and literary organizations use April to promote poetry, publishers often release and publicize poetry, their poetry titles; teachers and librarians focus on poetry units during this month, and bookstores and reading series frequently hold special readings; and whereas jazz is complementary to poetry and is an original American art form that affirms the noblest aspirations of our national character, individual discipline, perseverance, and innovation; and whereas jazz has produced some of America's leading creative artists and ranks as one of America's greatest exports to the world; and whereas jazz has inspired dancers, choreographers, poets, novelists, filmmakers, classical composers, and musicians in many other kinds of music; and whereas America's jazz heritage deserves to be appreciated as broadly as possible and should be part of the education of both America's children and America's adults. Now therefore, with the support of the City Council, I, Dave Geisberts, the Mayor of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize the month of April 2013 as National Poetry and Jazz Appreciation Month in Hagerstown, Maryland. So thank you for indulging me in that. I think it's -- I definitely look forward to hearing The Writer's Almanac every morning on NPR, Garrison Keillor. I don't know if anyone else is a fan. First item on our agenda is a report of the Dog Park Task Force and recommendations. So I'd welcome to the table our city engineer Rodney Tishew, and he can introduce members of the task force he has here with him.
Good afternoon. I think for maybe 10 years at least, the city's been talking about the concept of an off-leash park for dogs, where dogs and their owners can gather and kind of complement some of the other parks that we already have. We've had several proposals over the years. Last fall, the mayor and council decided to appoint a task force to study the issue and come back with some conclusions, and tonight, the task force presents their recommendations. So Maria Mestry is here with me. She's the chairperson of the task force, and she'll introduce the other members of the task force that are gathered here. I also wanted to mention that Michael Lawson, the new director of the Washington County Humane Society, is here, along with Catherine Cooker from the Humane Society. They were with us every meeting along the way, discussing this issue and how it would work and those kind of things. So I just want to recognize that they're here as well. So I'll turn the presentation over to Maria, and she'll walk us through it.
Thank you, Rod. Thank you for having us here. I just want to say thank you to the team, the task force team, an outstanding effort and dedication to really looking into reviewing and researching everything needed for the task force. So without further ado, the members behind me, Nate Meckley, Tony Bitner, Stacy Webster, Renee Bergen, and Heather Holman. So thank you again. Now addition -- we were all the voting members of the task force. We all had a seventh member, Martha Whittington, but she resigned right before we started our first meeting. But addition to the voting members, we had non-voting members, Rodney Tishew, city engineer Junior Mason, park superintendent, and from the Humane Society of Washington County, we had Catherine Cooker and Evelyn Garrett participate. We were also in consultation with Bill Narin, city attorney, and Lieutenant Paul Kiefer from City of Hagerstown Police Department. So the task force looked at four main high-level goals in order to determine which location would be best. So we looked at what dog park would be best. We looked at location, operations, fundraising, and public interaction. So for location, each site was evaluated with a matrix of criteria, and we'll go over that later. Some of those criteria were size, adjacencies to residents, access to residents, land ownership, cost, existing features, things like that. Operations, how will the dog park operate? Will there be a fee? Who will monitor it? And what is the liability to the city? For fundraising, we looked into what other fundraising could be accomplished in addition to the funding from the city. Some ideas that we discussed were advertising on the fences, charging a fee for users, and donations from corporate and private donors. For public interaction, we knew gaining community support was critical, so the task force developed a petition that was posted both online and in local businesses, 18 local businesses, to show community support. We also contacted residents surrounding the proposed site, meeting with them, giving them an opportunity to voice concerns and opinions. So the task force had 11 meetings that took place between November and March. Eight meetings took place here in City Hall, two off-site with the voting members, and one took place at Fairgrounds Park with the surrounding residents and the task force. We looked at 10 key questions that would help us review and answer questions to achieve the four goals that were set previous about location, operations, fundraising, and interaction. We looked -- we asked ourselves, how many dog parks exist in the U.S. and locally? What's the percentage of dog owners in the U.S. in Hagerstown? How many dogs are in Hagerstown? What are the benefits of dog parks? How to show community support? How will the potential sites be ranked and selected? How will the dog park operate? What amenities will be available? How will funds continue to be raised to help maintain and grow the dog park? And what is the proposed schedule? And those will be answered as we go along in the presentation. So the first one about overall in the U.S., it was noted in 2010 that there were 569 off-leash dog parks in 100 largest U.S. cities. It's more than 1,200 dog parks estimated in the entire U.S. It's a 34 percent increase in five years. In 2011, it was noted that dog parks are the fastest-growing segment of city parks. So then we looked at how many dog parks exist locally. In Maryland, they were all in Frederick -- and this is within a 30-mile radius. We thought that was more realistic to look at of what -- where dog owners would actually go. So in Frederick, City of Frederick, Ballenger Creek, and Greenbrier Dog Park, Pennsylvania, we have Chambersburg with Norlo Park, Waynesboro with Northside, Shippensburg with Shippensburg Township, and in Greencastle, we just -- an article actually just came out a few days ago that they have a dog park. It says, "The Parks Committee approved recommending moving forward with constructing a dog park at the Township Park as early as this fall." So that's the expectation for Greencastle. And in West Virginia, Ambrose Park, that's expected to open in 2013 as well. So aside from what dog parks exist in the U.S. and locally, we looked at dog owners in the U.S. and in Hagerstown. It's noted that 78.2 million dogs are owned in the U.S. 39 percent of households own at least one dog, 28 percent two dogs, and 12 percent of U.S. households three dogs. 40 percent of the population, it's estimated, are estimated to be pet owners. And just to kind of show how important pets are to their owners, $53.3 billion was spent on pets in the U.S. in 2012, and that number is expected to go up this year about 4 percent to $55.53 billion. So it's a big -- pet owners think their pets are a big deal and don't mind spending the money. How many dogs are in Hagerstown? Estimated 5,000 to 8,000 dogs within the city limits. Then we talked about the benefits of a dog park. So what are the dogs going to get out of it? What are the owners' community? First one was build a sense of community. Dog owners can meet and interact with other dog owners. A really good example of that is just this task force itself, on how we didn't know each other, but we're dog owners, we love our dogs, we're interested in a dog park, and we've now formed friendships, and we definitely share news and information with each other. This also provides a safe space for dogs to exercise freely and off-leash, while deterring endangerment to residents and to themselves. Just remember, even though dogs can be walked around the park with a leash, this is a contained area, and they can get their exercise that they need, and honestly, an exercised dog is a happy dog and calm. This also provides a setting for dogs and dog owners to socialize, promotes health and safety for dogs in addition to responsible dog ownership. And like I was saying before, training tips, good manners, and owner responsibilities can be communicated, so pet owners, dog owners, will talk amongst themselves. The mere presence of people and dogs can reduce the crime rate, so the constant in-and-out of dogs and people is most likely going to deter somebody from wanting to sneak around in the adjacent neighborhood. This can also encourage pet adoptions. It's a great way to provide members of the senior and disabled communities to give their dogs the exercise they need. So they're physically unable to really give the dogs exercise that the dogs really need, so this is a great opportunity, a great place to take their dogs. It also can increase the appeal of the city to existing and potential residents. A lot of our -- the signatures we got on the petition, a nice portion of it was actually -- we got Hagerstown, but from people from out of town. So it just shows you, people are coming to Hagerstown from out of town, and this would be yet another focus for them, another reason for them to come to Hagerstown, hence, you know, increasing revenue. So we get into how to show community support. Like I said, a petition was created to allow the community to show their support for a dog park. Again, it was online in 18 local businesses. The total number of signatures we got was just under 1,500 signatures, 366 online and over 1,100 in local businesses. And I went through physically, and 721 of the 1128 had a Hagerstown address. Okay, how were the potential sites ranked and selected? So we looked at 12 potential sites, and these are all within the city limits, and we used 12 criteria to rank these sites. So as you can see, from 1 to 12, starting with size, lack of adjacent residencies, these are the order in which we ranked the criteria. And what we did was, for each park, we would rank 1 through 5, let's say it's size, we'd rank that 1 through 5 on the park, and then we'd multiply that by 10, and that would get the weighted value. So we did that for each criteria, and I think we have an attachment there.
The map.
There's a map. It's Attachment B of the areas that we looked at, the potential park locations we looked at. And Attachment C is your dog park criteria, the chart that we used to rank. So within that, I want to make note that Walnut Street was not considered because Conrail was not receptive to selling the property, and Mills Park was also eliminated from further consideration. So if you look at Attachment D, this is the criteria, the matrix, all filled out with each person's rankings by site, so you can see how they scored each potential location. And after everything was scored and added up, the top three ranked sites based on the criteria ended up being City Park, Fairgrounds Park South, and Hager Park. And although Hager -- sorry, City Park was ranked number one based on the calculation, Fairgrounds Park superseded it mainly due to cost. And if you look at Attachment E and F, you'll see the cost estimates for Fairgrounds and for City Park. So per the initial cost estimates, City Park exceeded the cost of Fairgrounds by approximately The features that, or the lack of features that made that more expensive were we needed to put a six-foot fence in, asphalt trails, and lighting. Those were some of the more costly recommendations. Nevertheless, we looked at both drawings, both potentials. But after careful review, we agreed that Fairgrounds Park South was the most logical recommendation. And if you look at Attachment G. So you can see in the slide that the area in Fairgrounds that we're talking about, which is Reed -- was, I guess, called Reed Park, and you can see where Wood Street towards the right and Jefferson Street on the bottom, where the parking lot is. And then we look at the dog park, the layout. So I guess, again, cost was the main factor with selecting this location, and some of the features that lowered the cost were the existing fences, parking, walking trails, and lighting. If you -- I don't know if you've already seen this layout, but we have an area dedicated for large dogs on the right, small dogs on the left. We have a double gate entryway to ensure dogs don't get out. There's vegetative screening, if you look on the bottom. So for areas that butt up against residences, we were intending to put vegetative screening, more trees, benches, things like that. So in keeping with the fact that we knew maintaining community support was very critical, we met with the residents who lived adjacent -- who live adjacent to the proposed park. Total of 36 letters were sent on February 14th, and the meeting was held on February 23rd at Fairgrounds Park Office. The purpose of the meeting was to present this drawing to show a specific section of Fairgrounds that could be a future dog park, the planned layout, the benefits that we discussed earlier for dog park, for both dogs, owners, and community. And also, really, this was an opportunity for residents to voice their concerns and opinions about the proposed dog park. We felt the meeting was generally positive. The concerns were discussed, and suggestions were proposed by staff to address those concerns. One of the modifications was the vegetative screening that I was just talking about along the fence line, just to keep it a little more private for the residents. Here's a picture of before the vegetative screening. You can see the fence very clearly. And this is after. So before again, and then there's after. Okay, then we got further into how the dog park will operate. And we met with city attorney Bill Narin and also Lieutenant Paul Kiefer, City of Hagerstown Police Department. So after talking to Bill Narin, we decided, or we discussed and reviewed, that the city can maintain a governmental immunity for potential liabilities as long as residents and visitors are not charged a fee. If a fee is charged, the city's liability would potentially increase and become more proprietary in lieu of a government operation. Per Sherri Butler, the city's current insurance policy will cover the dog park, and no additional premium charge would be incurred. And dog licenses would be required for residents of Washington County. And things that were covered with Lieutenant Paul Kiefer, dog owners are legally and financially responsible for their dog's actions and must be able to control their dogs at all times. Violations such as cleaning up after dogs are to be enforced amongst peers. So people using the dog park within the dog park are to enforce that amongst each other. Aggressive dog issues or reports are to be handled by the Humane Society of Washington County, but aggressive owner issues and reports are to be handled by the Hagerstown Police I also wanted to state that the task force is proposing to establish a dog park advisory committee to assist in communicating issues to the city after the dog park is open. This would consist of residents, possibly some neighboring the dog park, that would meet with city staff to ensure the park is running smoothly. Staffing, the dog park is not foreseeable, however, it is recommended to have as much presence in the park as possible during the first month of operations. Staff will be required to perform a general cleanup of the dog park once a week. Rules and regulations, which is Attachment H, for the dog park was created and reviewed by city attorney Bill Narin. There were 15 rules and regulations listed, including hours of operation and an ending comment, "To please be a responsible dog owner as the park is a privilege," just a friendly reminder. Then we discussed the amenities that will be available in the dog park. So we detailed that out to six-foot PVC-coated chain link fence, a fabric screen against private property, dual pavilion, security cameras, benches, dual-species water fountain, waste receptacles with dog waste bags. Again, the two sections that we were talking about, one for dogs equal or greater than 25 pounds, and one for dogs less than 25 pounds. Double secure entryway, additional trees, and the vegetative screen. Then we talked about funding for the dog park. $40,000 is requested to come from City of Hagerstown's excise tax funds, a portion of which is earmarked for park development. And based on that cost estimate we were talking about, the essential items total approximately And that -- those essential items are what we feel are sufficient to begin construction on a dog park. And you can see those items there, again, the fence, gates, a stone dust vest, park signs, the receptacles, trees, water fountain, and water service.
And you already have pledges.
Yeah, thank you. It's anticipated that remaining funds of the dog park will be raised by companies and residents within Hagerstown. And if there's Attachment I, there was a draft, a fundraising package drafted by the city that has gone out, and we have pledges already from some major companies, verbal pledges, should this be approved. The remaining features, we are estimating would total approximately $16,000, and that's -- we intend, worst case, to get that from private donations. And what is the proposed schedule? If the council approves the proposed dog park at the next meeting schedule for Tuesday the 23rd, the task force is setting a tentative opening date of June 29th. That's it.
Thank you, the task force members, for all of your work. And if you don't mind sticking around in case some council members have questions for you, I'm sure there's at least one amongst them. Who would like to make an inquiry? Mr. Alshar?
Well, I mean, I have a number of questions. So I'm sure others have similar questions here at the table, one of which you already answered, which was the funding. It would be excise tax, not general fund. And then you also answered the insurance issues. I guess maybe my first question is, I'm very familiar that other past processes have not been successful. So my first question maybe is for staff. Why did Mill and Hager -- why did they fail?
It wasn't directly involved in the Mill Park proposal. What I understand there was, there was several people in the community, not necessarily neighbors of the park, that spoke out against it. Hager Park, we proposed that last summer.
That was the baseball group, right?
Right. The American Little League said that they used that area, and then there was another proposal for a community garden in that area. So it was -- that's kind of what led into this task force creation.
Okay. Are there any covenants? I know, Penny, you had asked the question. Are there any stipulations that came along with the acquisition of Reed Park that would prohibit this type of use?
No, that's a good question. We looked back at the covenants, and the only thing it says is that it would be used for a park. It's pretty general.
Okay. And I know that you noted in your comments, you held the community meeting out there, and I know it wasn't heavily attended. You said it generally went positive, but clearly, in the case of these items, there's always going to be some concern. Have we been able to address that? And in other words, what were some of the specific concerns?
Well, I think the main concern that I heard that day was the concern that the dogs in the park will make the dogs in the neighborhood work. And so the way that we discussed that day to address that was to try to put up a visible barrier from one to the other. So that's when the idea of planting the vegetative screen around the perimeter of the park, and also, if you look on the drawing, there's a light blue line where the properties that are immediately -- they share a common fence with the dog park. We talked about putting some of that privacy screening, which is the mesh that would go on the fence, to further, as much as anything, for the dogs to not be able to see each other along with the vegetative screen.
Yeah, and that gets to my next question. I look at the drawing, and you've shown it to me before, but I mean, I understand the impetus in wanting to sort of maximize space, but I mean, you're hugging this thing right against the property lines of existing residents. And if you look at some other features within the park, you'll see that there is some space separation. Even in this drawing, you'll see that there's some space separation between the private residents and park uses. I'm just curious what the need was to sort of hug this exactly against the property lines.
Going back to the drawing, well, maybe this picture. In this area, this is from the alley to the west, there is a buffer between the alley and the existing fence.
That's here, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, you got, I'm going to guess that's about 30 feet there.
That's about right. Maybe a little more.
But I'm talking about this property line here along what I'll call the southeast.
Right. At one time, we did talk about moving the, kind of creating another line. Let's see if this will work. Yeah, maybe creating a line in here, and then it just kind of made for a kind of a awkward area in here. It was kind of really small, and we weren't sure what to do with it, so the proposal came back basically to use the entire area, but...
I mean, you can't get that structure on the left any closer to that odd property line.
Than here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the pavilion.
Yeah. So what's in that person's backyard there?
Well, the houses are out here.
Yeah, but I understand that part, but what's in that neighbor's backyard?
There might be a couple of small sheds or garages, but mostly, it's just open space.
And the property owners, the neighbors that are most impacted, did you hear directly from them? And if so, could you point them out on the drawing here?
Sure. I think several of the people that attended that day, I know, lived in this general area. I know Mrs. Wilson, who's in attendance and has also spoke to the council, lives right in this general area. But I think most of the people had Cannon Avenue addresses. Even though we sent letters to everybody around here, up along Wood Street, the whole way over to Security Road, the folks that came were these right here.
Yeah. And I guess for me, I'm most interested in, again, sort of that southeast boundary line.
Like down in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, none of those folks attended.
And there and to the right.
We sent it to the property owners.
A lot of those are homeless. A lot of those don't have dogs either.
Right.
I know that. And the ones who do, it's just the dogs out front, because that's how you access the front of the homes. It's the dogs that are coming from the back on Cannon Avenue.
Right, there are some dogs that are in this area right here.
Right. Which, I mean, like I said, you've got, in my mind, when you look at it, you've got reasonable separation between the two. You've got the alley, the grass area, you know, some trees that appear to already exist. It's, my concern would be, like, the property in particular, where you plan to extend the larger dog park area, you know, along halfway up somebody's, you know, side fence line. That's where I would have concern, you know, if I were a resident.
I think in our view, it was more of using the existing fence that was there, to be honest with you, and that's why...
And that's why we thought of the vegetative screening and the other screening.
So whose fence is that around that area now?
It's the original perimeter fence of the fairgrounds.
That's Reed Park.
Yeah.
My question is, whose fence is it?
I think it's the city's.
It's the city's. And it's right there on the line. That there's a road.
If the thinking and knowing are two different things, I'm not.
Oh, it's, it's, it's the city's.
I could say that definitively.
Whoever had Reed Park in the beginning.
So the existing fence is this, this, this. The proposed fence is this and this. And that's why this one was a little bit cheaper because we didn't need as much fence because it was already head fence on two sides.
Rodney?
Yes, sir.
Presumably this is going to be well-used. Where's the parking?
So the proposal's in this area here and there is a path that takes you over to this parking lot right here. That's probably the most direct parking.
So the parking's some considerable distance away?
No, that's, that's 200 yards max.
Hagerstown.
That's a big distance to Hagerstown.
Unless it's a mall. Then it's right next door.
There's also, I guess for the record, there's about six, seven spaces right here. And you could park there, walk up the path and go in that way. Right.
Yeah, because you have people that actually do walk their dogs in the parks.
Is that lane coming down? Is that specifically a pedestrian access only?
You're talking about this one that comes around like this?
Uh, no, further down, right there.
Yes, it's a path. It's a, like an eight-foot wide paved path. And it takes you down, from the main part of the fairgrounds, it takes you down and there's an access gate.
The stonewall management's on the right side there, correct?
Right in here, correct, yeah.
Where we looked at a dog park long ago.
Really?
Yeah, I remember that originally. Because I know just where you're talking about and that's what I was curious, right?
Down in that, down in that.
The other site we looked at in this study was kind of in front of the ice rink, but on that bank area. And it's an open space, no one's using it, but it's completely sloping, so it didn't seem to be as good.
I don't understand why the railroad. Because the railroad was really, I mean, you know, interested in helping the city as far as doing cleanups or anything like that. And there's so much land that is back in that area. So what was their objection? I mean, I'm hearing one thing, that the railroad wasn't willing to talk, but yet the railroad was willing to talk when we had other things going.
Yeah, if there's somebody that, from them, that would talk to us about, the person I talked to indicated that they have a, this is the corner, for everyone's information, this is the corner of Antietam and Walnut.
Right, it's on the map here.
Yeah, it's on the map, which I don't have a screenshot of. But it's right at that corner and the person I talked to indicated that they have a road that goes basically right through it and they go back to service their tracks back in there that's kind of behind City Park. And they pretty much said that they wouldn't be interested in selling it. Now, there's other people we could talk to.
See, I wasn't even seeing that part. I was seeing, I was seeing the part that you can see from where the softball fields, that, I don't even know if they're utilized any longer. It used to be seniors that played down in there. But it was that area up in there where the tracks, because you've got all that field.
Yeah, they're used, recently a bit. The softball fields?
No, 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 no. The track that the railroad owns, that is totally vacant. I guess that's where the, what was it that was there that got taken down?
Roundhouse.
Yeah, the roundhouse.
Yeah, those tracks are still used.
You know, you had that area up in there too as well and they were gonna clean all of that out. The thing that concerns me the most is because it is a very active park at Fairgrounds, all right? And I've talked to Stacy, you know, that is my biggest concern. You've got kids that have utilized this area over there and it's like Mrs. Wilson said, from pickup football to kids who go and practice soccer, from kids who go over and play basketball. It's unfortunate, but most of our sports that are over there are sports that kids have to pay to play. And this is a park where kids in the neighborhood can actually play. Now, there's two areas for small children, but that's a big concern of mine. BMX you have to pay, soccer you have to pay. Softball, forget, you can't use those fields because they're not gonna let you, and that's a little late. So, you know, that's, that's one of my big things. And I have dogs, guys, four, okay? So it's not that I'm against a dog park, but I can't understand too, as to, and I didn't know that the county even had, but Stacy had told me they had, it was basically a run. But why didn't somebody approach the county as far as having a park as well? Because there was more county residents that was actually interested in a dog park, but yet nobody has ever really gone to the county. And this is back, this is not only just now, this is back. Because certainly with us paying into the county, city, you know, there should be something that should be also accessible and God knows, they've got land. But that's what concerns me about Fairgrounds, it really does.
Rodney, Penny, are you? Off of Penny's question, there's a volleyball area that says, remove existing, remove the, demolish, not just remove, the basketball court, we're gonna remove the volleyball court. To what extent are those courts used? I don't know if Junior's there.
With Junior's here and I've talked to him about this a lot, the sand volleyball court is right here. And I think it's, everybody's in agreement that it's used very little. It could simply be relocated. And we, we were planning on relocating it somewhere else in the park. It's, it's probably a couple of day job at most to relocate that. The basketball court, some people say it's used some, some people say not at all. What I've seen, when I've been out there, is people are using the pow rink, which has basketball hoops on it. It's lit, you can play there at night. It's in good shape. And I see more people using that than I see using this court down here.
I usually see the smaller kids using that court and the bigger kids playing on the, on the other one.
And I gather.
And excuse me, the pow, because now they are getting a foothold too and they're trying to bring more of the city kids in. Those, that rink that was to be used for hockey as well as, okay, they put the basketball things in, we'll probably see another big move on children and teens, okay? That's gonna be in there. So again, you've left the ones that continue to move into this area and who finds the fairgrounds, okay? And I'd rather see them do that than over in the other part of Fairgrounds where all the fighting and all happens. And that's a biggie.
Rodney, the pavilion move, I would gather, is maybe a way of linking the large, if you did move it, which I realize is optional, of linking the small dog and the large dog area, sort of this mingling of folks and all that?
Yeah, the idea is to, basically is just to kind of dismantle it and pour a new concrete slab that's kind of split by the fence so that half of it's on one side and half's on the other so that kind of creates a pavilion for both sides. Not necessarily an eating pavilion, but a pavilion of, you know, some shade, places to sit down.
Although I don't know about co-mingling large and small dog owners. I don't know about, I don't know about that, anyhow.
Along those lines, I don't see the relocation of that pavilion in the cost estimate for Fairgrounds Park. Has that been there?
I didn't put it in there, I think that's my mistake. Junior and I talked about that, dismantling of that slaver. The concrete work would probably be about $5,000. It wouldn't be a big job to move it.
Did that come with Reed? That's been there since I've been down there. And, you know, we've lived there.
Junior, do you know when that was built?
Yeah, we've lived there 47 years. So that's been there a long time.
I guess, I realize that this is the committee's top choice. And by the way, thank you for the hard work and the elaborate layout and obviously a thought process went into this. The, the top three parks though were only separated by five points. And Hager's point was actually one point ahead, which when you do these things, one point doesn't mean much, was actually in second place, the way I saw the rating chart. And yet there's no information in here. And I guess my second thing is, there's no, did you do any schematics for, I know you did some preliminaries for Hager and back when you were working on it. And did you do any preliminary or schematics for the, the City Park site, the second choice? Because they were all close and then there was a drop off to the fourth place one.
Yeah, we, here's the Hager Park one. And unfortunately, when we loaded the PowerPoint, that's what I got for City Park.
Where would the City Park be located?
Right off of Walnut Lane. As you're driving, if you cross Antietam Street, you're heading south on Walnut and the upper end of the park. There's that area, the meadow, some people call it.
My comments with rewards issue. I, first of all, thank everybody, first of all. Second of all, I think no matter what the comments are, I would be shocked to find that we don't have a dog park in the City of Hagerstown in the very near future. I think the real question is whether it's at this location or in my mind, whether it's at the number one choice. There's a couple of things I would note. One, when I see the criterion the committee used, it included a cost issue in there. And even with the cost issues in there, City Park came in above this.
It did, but it did not. We, we were estimating how much it was gonna cost. We didn't actually have numbers.
Okay.
So my, we couldn't give an actual.
Okay, that's fine. Then my next question become, when I look at this, I have a couple of issues. One, I am curious, some of these issues are much more concerning to me than others. For instance, a lot of them have to do with finance, but I see safety, I see size, I see lack of adjacent residences. My only point is this, I would like to think that we're going to build a dog park and we're gonna build a successful one. And if we do that, I would like to think this dog park is gonna be around, like our parks are, one heck of a lot longer than any of us are gonna live. Now, let me just assume that this dog park's gonna have a life of 40 years, just by way of example.
Kristin will be around, come on.
Well, but I mean, if you assume that, my point is, what I'm being told by the committee is the sole reason that City Park wasn't chosen was cost. Now, we're talking $40,000 over 40 years. We're choosing the number three location over the number one location due to $1,000 a year over the, the life of the park. And it's probably much closer to $200 a year over the life of the park. Now, I know that you all have an obligation when you come in here not to present us something that is gonna be like, oh, it would be great, but now that the expense is known, we're not gonna build it. Now, I'm not necessarily everyone else. I will only say this, for the difference in these two prices, for me, if we're gonna build a park and it's gonna be a permanent park to service our citizens, I would like to do two things. One, I would like to build the park at the best location. Two, I would like to build the park at a location that would be least problematic for neighbors. So for me, I would love to give you your number one choice that's listed on here. That's, that's my feeling. If the majority of the body does not want to expend that money for that, I'm certainly not willing to suggest that we don't build a dog park and that we don't build a dog park out there and you won't find me arguing against it or voting against it. But I personally would prefer to see the number one choice with the least impact as it relates to, to residents. Now, that, I think we would like to see a schematic on that and like to get input from, from the committee that, I mean, I'm relying on what you said, that the reason you chose, didn't choose City Park was solely because of the money. And I also understand that it would not, it's not us saying, well, you can raise the extra $40,000. I understand that, that we would be, if we chose that option, that, that would be an expense, personally me, that I would say the city would absorb. But that's, that's my feelings.
I just would like to have a view of what the railroad owns, Rodney. I need to go on a ride. I can't do it on paper.
The bike ride?
I run this committee for this committee. Most people I've talked to on Facebook and all that, they want Fairgrounds Park versus City Park because it's so convenient and they're there already. They're there with their husbands playing softball.
That's the problem.
But that's not what the dog park is about. The dog park is for people to go take their dogs, not, and the one thing we had been told from the very get-go and the one reason we were so much against the initial park was because of being told, keep the dogs and the people separate. And, and, and I also, I, I need to look at people who live right adjoining this. And I think while there may be very few, you know, it's, it's the old story, it's great as long as it's not your ox getting gored. And again, if money is the issue, because again, I, I see this as a place for, for people to take their dogs. I don't see this necessarily as a place for somebody who's gonna be involved in a three-hour softball game, for dad to be playing softball and children or somebody like that to be taking the dog over to the dog park. And that's, I just, that's, that's an issue that I have. And I think.
Let me just ask a question about the cost part of it because I'm looking at the City Park, Dog Park.
Which is up on the screen now.
Okay. What asphalt trails would need to be built there?
And what's the difference in size? Is this bigger, smaller?
This is smaller.
That was another issue.
But I don't think it's a matter of simply size or cost. I mean, it's a matter of landscape. I mean, this property is sandwiched between two streams that in a high rain event, as a kid growing up there and adult living there now, I mean, it, it gets wet and it gets wet fast and it stays wet a long time. And I, I own $2.01. Now, my other one died last week. And I walked in there a million times.
So I need to hear, Kristin. I mean, so I need to hear. My concern is I'm hearing that this was the number one choice. And if it was the number one choice and the only thing preventing it from being used is money, my answer is, to me, I would rather use the number one choice. Now, if I would be told all the reasons why this really isn't the place.
I think there's a lack of parking. I think that there, there is a lack of access. I think that there is an issue with its environmental integrity, you know, in terms of, it's a low-lying wetland area. The city puts mulch there sometimes, you know. When, when the storm came through, it took out, what, 12 or 15 of the trees because it's such a wet area. For, for me, you know, the parking that, that is available is going to be the 12 spaces next to the Hager House.
I was gonna say, my understanding is it's Walnut Street, all along Walnut Street, it's parallel parking.
You got more parking there?
Well, yeah, I know you got, you got the street. But, but for me, as a dog owner, trying to, to park and then hop out in a parallel spot along the street is no better than, than when I hop out, parallel parked, when, when the band's playing.
On paper, this was number one. Until we got these drawings, that's when it, it moved out of the number one spot. Once we saw what we could do with that piece of land versus where we were gonna park, what was, I mean, cost, yes, was an issue, but once we saw this drawing, it became.
It became real.
Right.
We realized it wasn't, probably wasn't even number three or four.
I'm just not seeing that part of the railroad property. I wanna be able to see the part of the railroad property that if I go back in where the bums are at, okay, and I'm seeing out, who owns that property that is there that you can actually see if you're coming off of Basil Boulevard?
Oh, that's Basil.
That's railroad property.
Okay? I mean, you have a lot.
It's CSX, it's CSX railroad.
You've got a lot that is there.
So which railroad actually owns? I saw two.
I think there's two.
Norfolk Southern is the one that is listed on the map. But in the text of the report, it says something about Conrail. Is that the same thing?
Conrail, Norfolk Southern owns the property. This is Walnut Lane. And then you go up here and Antietam Street crosses up here. Norfolk Southern owns this corner up in here. Just north of what they call Maggie's Hole where the storm drain empty is out there.
Yeah, that you guys closed up?
Yes.
Kids can't swim in anymore.
They have an access road, as well as Councilwoman Nye's, that they have an access road that goes through that property to get over to these tracks here. The rest of the land out there is owned by CSX, all in around the roundhouse and between all the tracks.
Right, it's got two nice flat fields on the backside, but there's no accessibility to it. Nice flat fields, but, yeah.
Maybe you can get the railroad to be a partner.
Right.
There is a, they do have a community foundation. We did look at it, and they won't sell us the land, they will donate it.
But that's what I said.
Or they'll manage it, but then there's a liability issue. I had all the numbers. There was a liability issue they didn't want to deal with. It's like you had to have so much insurance before they'd even bother.
Well, it's still a matter of talking to. You know, if you could just meet with someone, rather than have it all on paper. I mean, you know, the worst they can say is, no, we don't want to do it. But I just see that as an area that would be your area, you know?
I'd like to go back, pick up the thread where I left off.
Sorry, Marty.
No, that's all right. The Hager House, excuse me, the Hager site, Hager Park site, the, it was, like I said, it was rated amongst the top three. And possible community garden, which was already there, is, you know, that can be worked around or relocated. As I recall, the problem there was the size of the site, more than anything that I can recall. But why, if that was in the top three, I don't, once we get beyond the first page, I don't see anything more about it. What was the, do you have a cost estimate for that? And, I know you had something before.
I was going to look this up, and I forgot. The site is about three-quarters of an acre. For comparison, the one at Fairgrounds Park, the main cell, the big park is over an acre. The smaller one was smaller. So, it's like twice the size. Fairgrounds Park's twice the size of Hager Park. So, that was one issue. And then, I think, if I recall, the cost estimate was around $60,000, because it needed a fence basically on all four sides. But it did have some things going for it. It had water, had electricity, there was existing bathrooms there, there was existing parking there.
Right.
It was basically the issue of the other uses wanting to be there too.
Well, again, I think the baseball use could probably be accommodated too. I don't know how often it's used for that, but, you know.
Oh, from early March, clear and through, when does tournaments end?
It's a spare field, but.
Yeah, I know, but they use, that's the only place usually, now you can't get spare fields to practice.
Okay, I just still think that, you know, we got, go for the best site, as Lou says, and Fairgrounds has an existing fence, that seems to be a consideration. And I got to commend the committee bringing cost in, because so often, citizens committees don't do that, so I really got to commend them.
Can I address something that Miss Nye said earlier? She asked why we didn't go to the county. We were trying to look for a central location for city residents, you know, primarily with the offer of inviting people from the county and then from outerlying areas, because there's a lot of people that live in apartments and such down, in the downtown areas, and a lot of people that don't have transportation. So, we were trying to also do it within a walking distance of like Potomac Towers, Walnut Towers, and the other apartment buildings in the city.
And that's a hard enough crack, it really is. And I'm not saying that wouldn't be great, but I think that you're going to have probably more county residents interested in coming into the city. That's why I said, and not that we couldn't have two, but I just don't understand with the land that the county has, that it really should have been addressed, because they certainly do have land. And especially with another new park that they're going to end up building, I don't know when, but it's going to go out off of Leiterberg Pike. So, but I'm going to address that, because I'd like to know why they haven't. They have more money. But it would be wonderful.
There you go.
And the way I said before, I said, you know, I was looking at, I was looking at the south end of town. I said, you know, right there were the, yeah, sewer department and all of that, out in that area that has not been developed. But again, there's no access to that, because we haven't gone that far.
Rodney, I'm sorry.
Done.
Norfolk Southern site, you said an access road was, what they said was an issue. Have to take a look at that again. I didn't realize they did that there. But, second thing, is does that have the issue similar to what Kristen was describing? Is the lower, farther down Walnut there, at the City Park site?
It sits a little higher, so.
Yeah, it seems to me it's up a little bit, yeah.
Yeah. It is above the outpost. But, again, you'd have on-street parking, unless we build a parking lot. There's no bathrooms, very close, just some of the other criteria.
That would be a City Park issue too. I mean, it's just, unless you say they're close enough to you to walk through to the, on the trail to the Hager House area, I guess.
Right, right. Which those are open a couple of days a week.
Yeah.
And the public ones are over to the middle of the park.
Rodney, can I ask a couple of questions that are not site-specific? Who's going to clean this park up?
Well, we talked about that a lot, and I think the main answer to that is that responsible owners clean up after their own dogs. Responsible owners also remind other people to clean up after their dogs, and that seems to work very well on a lot of these other parks. There's no doubt, though, that we'll have to go through it maybe once a week and do some general cleanup too.
I would suggest responsible owners probably should be cleaning up after other people's dogs too, because I think clearly, everybody knows what happens. If we get out there after six months and nobody's cleaning up after themselves at all, then we're just not going to have a dog park.
Exactly. It wouldn't take much to take the fence down.
Oh, it'll be cleaner than what the park is, because we have the other ones that don't have enough cameras to stop those, and they just go the whole way through the park.
Okay, now, how about noise issues? I love dogs, but I spent the weekend with my grandson and his dog, Hal, Hal 24 hours a day for three days. Are there, did you discuss noise issues?
We did. I mean, there's dogs in that general area now. There's dogs that can walk the perimeter of the fairgrounds.
I take my dog to the one in Chambersburg all the time. I work up there, so I spend a lot of time with it. The dogs don't bark when they're playing. They're playing. They're not there trying to get people from outside to come in. Their attention's with the other dogs. The barking's, it does happen, but it's not as much as you may think it's going to be.
Maybe not like an incessant barking, like some people's dogs do.
Two bark, give me back my toy, that type of barking, that's it.
Maybe no louder than children playing?
That's what I would equate it to.
Usually, when I go out to the one in the county, if the dogs start barking, we stop them. You know, it's just a matter, because usually, to be honest with you, if we're all standing around, the dogs are all around us. It's very rare that they go running, you know, too far ahead or too far behind, and if they get wound up and they start barking, usually the owners step in and say, you know, calm down.
It'll be the neighbors that are joining the fairground. They'll have to take their dogs in.
Well, I think that's the biggest strike against that one.
That's, I mean, that's, and they're there, yeah.
Certainly the people in the north end raised to howl and got listened to.
What about the hours? 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
That's our normal park hours.
Our normal park hours at Fairgrounds Park, is it 10:00 PM?
We won't even go there.
I thought we.
Should have been closed at dusk, but nobody listens.
I think these issues that you bring up about cleanup or noise, that's, again, going back to the presentation, this Dog Park Advisory Committee, that's kind of why we were going that route, because it's just not done once you open a dog park. There's going to be ongoing issues. There needs to be a committee that someone can contact, things can be addressed, and it doesn't get lost, to your point. But, you know, when a dog's in a dog park, it's exercise, it's occupied, and it's getting tired out, so it's not there. When, usually it barks incessantly when it's bored or wants to get at something. So, this is why this is so, probably not going to be ongoing barking within the dog park. I mean, a little bit of barking, of course.
About issues involving dogs getting in fights, attacking one another?
Let me answer that one, if you don't mind. I was at one of the biggest dog parks I'm aware of, up in York County, this weekend. There's three sections of the park. Each section is between two and four acres, so it's a very big park. Couple hundred dogs up there. It's actually quieter than a ballgame, because, again, as was already stated, the dogs aren't there barking, they're there playing. Also, in those scenarios, when you've got several hundred dogs, you would expect some level of fighting. But in fact, they're kind of better than most kids are and most of us are in terms of how they behave, and they police themselves very well. I mean, they're very pack-oriented, the animals. So, there was a fight that broke out very briefly while I was there. My dog was went, you know, went down to investigate what was going on, and by the time he got down there, the fight had broken up. So, they don't last long. And the other times I've been to that park, same situation. Something will happen, you hear some snarling, there'll be some tussling, and then it breaks up very quickly. The dogs that cause the fighting, the aggressive dogs, in those cases, are usually, if you do any reading on dogs as well, you'll see this, they're moved out by the rest of the pack, in this case, all the other dogs, and they're isolated. So, nobody wants to play with that dog. That's pretty normal dog behavior. Is there a chance something severe could happen? Anytime you have a dog, we know that there is always a potential for that. However, in general, and we did do some investigating in this, we did talk with the.
Lieutenant Kite.
Yeah, the lieutenant, and we also looked at some of the, how, so you want to build Dog Park book, was one of the big resources that we did look at. And in general, across the United States, any place where there are dog parks, this is actually a very, very minor issue, once they're up and operational. Dogs do police themselves pretty well.
In that investigation, did you find that dog parks were in such close proximity to other residences? Like in a situation like at Fairgrounds Park?
In some cases, yes. There's one that my dog will sometimes go to when we're back up a Pennsylvania visiting family again, where they're similar to what we're looking at here at Fairgrounds. You picture an L shape, except it's cut off, so it's more of a triangle. Along the outer edge of it, not the hypotenuse, but the A B side, is bordered directly up against residences, and, I mean, I can't comment on whether there are any issues with it, but you see residences using it.
Is this, the parks you're going to, are they specific dog parks?
Oh, yeah, so these are dog parks. They are part of.
Right, they're not an active park such as Fairgrounds.
They are part of a larger park.
They are part of larger parks.
But how separate are they from that? See, that's the thing.
They're not. No, they're integral to, the big, the real, real big one is integral to the park. You can't get to the dog park itself without going through the county park. And the smaller park, the same situation. You can't get into the little, the little community park without going through the rest of the ballfields and the playground area.
Chambersburg's Norlo Park is the same way, that the dog park is.
That's pretty, that's pretty normal.
As well as the Baker Park is the same.
Baker Park, what's, was within five feet of a residence, the fence line is.
Still is.
So, I mean, that, and that's still used. I was down this weekend, it was heavily used.
Guys, look, I have no objection to Dog Park, but I don't want it at Fairgrounds. I really don't. I wish that something could be amenable over at City Park. I just really would hate to take that area away from the kids, and we've got more kids that are coming into the area now, and that is the location that they go to.
But they can go play in these other fields when there's not, there is not a sporting event going on there.
There's always a sporting event.
We can't take our dogs somewhere else. There's not always a sporting.
Oh, yeah, there is. I live there.
Let me ask.
Please, tell him I live there.
Let me ask, Rodney, what do you want the city council to decide tonight? You're not looking for a decision tonight?
Not a decision tonight. The proposal asks that if the council would decide this month, if you would decide, the mayor and council would decide this month and vote on that, we could have it, the park up and running by the end of June. So, you know, this is going to require a vote of this body to expend the money and to, you know, allow staff to move forward. So, tonight, I think, was a discussion, but.
Yeah, right. But, but the reality of this discussion is no different than the realities of the previous four or five discussions we've had on this issue, is that at every point in this discussion, we're going to reach a period in the process where there is some level of opposition that we're going to have to absorb and determine a course of action on. And if every course of action, and this, to me, in the iterations that have occurred, is probably the most thorough of processes that we have accomplished in studying the issue, that looks at, you know, at least a dozen properties. So, it is difficult to say, well, we're going to make a decision in April, when that decision, based on the level of discussion and opposition that appears to exist, is that it not occur, you're not going to organize another task force. And another task force after that, and another review of properties after that, and ever come up with a viable solution that is going to be 100% acceptable to all parties everywhere. I think what you've done here is you've analyzed, you know, just about every property that may reasonably work. You have come up with a recommendation that appears to be amicable to most parties, and there's going to be a level of opposition, no different than any other, you know, decision that is out there. I think, and I, you know, and I said this to you in my email, that, you know, if you could square up the property and have that level of separation, I think it's a reasonable, you know, location. It seems to be, you know, publicly supported, and, you know, if, and all I'm saying is, if the vote at the end of this month, or a month from now, is no, then I have no interest in sending staff and some other task force back to the drawing board to look at the next option, which we're going to say no to, because some other, you know, voice of opposition's going to be raised.
I just would like to see City Park area, please, what the railroad owns.
Right.
All right.
So, we have one City Park, one partial Fairgrounds. Anyone else want to weigh in? Rodney?
Jury's out. I'm going to look at this some more, you know, ask some questions, and I'm going to look at the site some more.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying I'm going to automatically oppose, but I think Penny has legitimate concerns, and the residents have legitimate concerns. We listen to the residents in other locations, you know, so, while it's a good site, I, you know, so I, you know, I got to take that into account, but I, you know, I haven't come to a definitive conclusion. I asked some questions for Rodney. I think we need to pursue those a little bit more, and, you know, that doesn't mean we're not going to do a dog park, it just means I think we need to look at it some more. We're not rejecting the Fairgrounds. I think we need to weigh this a little. This is the first time we've had this in front of us, this particular proposal.
Don, do you have any thoughts?
I support a dog park, but I don't support a dog park at Fairgrounds. I would prefer, frankly, to see another location that's less, Penny has suggested, suggested a railroad location. Is there another, is there a possibility you can go talk to those folks again and see if we can even lease the land? We don't have to own the land, we can lease the land.
If you can just get us a name. I mean, staff was sent to do it before, okay? And I'm not saying anything against staff, and maybe they can laugh in my face, but they certainly have got land, and that land would be such an improvement, to have something on it, rather than the way that it sits now.
I can contact Norfolk Southern again and CSX.
Okay.
Well, I think it would be appropriate to point out to the railroad that currently they have a lot of homeless people living on their property.
Oh, they know that. They just found one that was dead.
And maybe the city should be taking some action in that regard.
Dead one?
They don't want to do a dog park.
They have found one that died.
Lou, do you have any thoughts on this?
My thoughts are.
Final thoughts, so we can move on?
One, as it relates to the railroad, good luck. I.
It'll take you long.
I.
Reds are tough, Penny.
I agree with Kristen. I agree with what Kristen said.
All right, well, we'll probably put it on another work session this month and try to be expeditious about it.
Wait a minute, there's one other issue. There's lots of other places here on the map, which were places of interest, but we don't have any information on them at all. I mean, Weasel Boulevard, Burrhands Boulevard here, is there a chance we could get information on them?
Yes.
And what, and what amenities they have?
Sure.
Or don't have?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think what format, absolutely is the answer to your question. I'm just thinking what format I can get that to you. We have some little maps that we've made that shows each location, and I could.
Do you think any of these locations major problems with your parking?
A lot of it, like the one on Basil Boulevard is a piece of city-owned property that most people don't even know the city owns it. It's right across from the Lowe's Distribution Center, but it doesn't have any amenities.
Right.
So, we'd have to start from scratch.
A lot of raspberries that people pick.
And it's not centrally located, that's.
Right.
No, I mean, locations like that.
Everybody goes to the mall.
It's a county, that's a county park. We'd be building for county.
Burrhands is the one with the tractor and trailer trailers.
Right beside it.
How about I'm Roy's Starex?
Why?
What about Woodland White?
What's Woodland White? Oh, that area, well, that church owns that. No, that's the county.
That's a county park.
That's the county park.
The county wants to give us that park.
Oh, do they?
And that's a central location. It's large.
Well, we don't want that park.
Well, it's larger than any area we're talking about.
And it's surrounded by homes.
And it's heavily used. That's the problem.
It has homes on one side, actually.
See, but Fairgrounds Park is heavily used too, Lou.
Well, I'm-
You just kicked yourself in the seat there.
Well, I agree with you.
Sure, we could continue with this conversation for at least another hour, but we don't have that much time, so.
One thing, this flyer that says, please sign up for a commitment to Fairgrounds Dog Park at Fairground, Hagerstown's Dog Park at Fairgrounds Park, I hope that's exemplary.
Yeah.
We haven't decided yet.
Absolutely. Everybody knows that. But I will say they've raised approximately $6,000 just in pledges.
That's fantastic.
Without even really trying. So that shows you, to some degree, how much interest.
Really do appreciate the work of the task force.
Furry friend, two paws up, tail wagger.
I agree with Lou that-
That's pretty good.
We will have a dog park in Hagerstown in the near future, and once we pick the brains of all the staff members and thoroughly do our homework, we'll make that decision, so.
We appreciate it. Thank you for the time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. So the next time, I'll contact the railroad. And is there anything else that we can do to help with the-
Well, I think the other inform, any other information you can get on those other sites to share with the council?
I think, yeah, what Councilman Munson said is true about all the sites. To the extent you have information, we'd probably like to see it.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Tissue gets to stay for the next item on our agenda, the permanent seating at the bandshell in City Park.
Yes.
In October, the former mayor and council gave us some direction on putting some permanent seating in there. And the plan was more of a wooden bench, kind of a continuous bench. As we've studied this and we've designed it, we think that maybe there's an alternate design that might be a little more cost-effective for us, maintenance-free, ADA compliant, and that's in your packet. I guess I'd like to have some input on this idea of basically taking these six-foot benches and creating a small amphitheater effect right in front of the bandshell. And as you can see in that sketch, the, we just put a row of those benches, we'd fasten them onto the, like a concrete sidewalk. There'd be ADA, that's symbolized by the wheelchair compliance there. And it would be a small area, maybe 160 patrons could sit there. There'd still be plenty of room for other people that don't want to sit on these benches, that want to sit out beyond with their own chairs and those kind of things. But this is a design we think might be better than what we offered a few months ago. So I just wanted to get some input. If you're okay with it, I'd like to move forward with the purchase of the benches so we can get this together this spring.
Is there more or less seating with this concept than the previous one?
It's probably about the same. You do have an arm at the end of each bench, but I think it's about the same.
This is, this is what you would be using?
Yes, and we, each one of those-
You can see them set out here, individual benches on the-
Have you sat in them on the plan?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I can say they're more comfortable than the wooden benches.
Okay, well, that's all I need to know. Yeah.
Okay, now, are these concreted into the ground to keep from being stolen? I saw red in here that you lose 25 benches a year.
Yeah, we'd put a concrete sidewalk down, basically, and then bolt them to that. So they would be-
Oh, you bolt them to it, okay.
Yeah, they'd be, they'd be permanently installed.
Okay, and this is what kind of material? Is this steel?
It's a steel bench with a, kind of a rubberized coating on it. The color, it could be any color, that's just what we-
Is there a problem with rusting?
No, I don't think so.
They're at Fairgrounds, Don.
Only if the rubberized coating is scratched or penetrated. Somebody vandalizes, then you have to, what's the process for refurbishing if they do? Do you spray it, or? Because that's, well, I hate to be facetious, but there are fools that go around.
We have that same type of bench, not that style, but type of bench in all our parks, and someone's been there 10 to 15 years. We've done nothing.
Okay.
They are very hard, even with a knife, to scratch that coating off of there. But they do sell repair kit, the manufacturer of rubber, that you can pour rubber on and repair it, but we've never had to do that with any of them.
Is all of our tables now metal?
They are metal with the rubberized-
Pangborn Park, is it metal now, under the pavilions?
Yes, ma'am.
What was, what table was it that was in the park? Oh, one of those.
Yeah, they went out.
I remembered, I remembered.
They were able to slide it through.
Yeah, I remembered that. One of the tables in the pond.
Yeah. They was creative, but you'd go down there.
About 150 places for people to sit.
160, mhm.
Why'd you choose that number? That seems a little low to me.
It might be, and it can be expanded. We could add more later. I think we wanted to have some designated seating, and if it works well, we could always add some more later, and we're going to design it so it can be expanded upon. But we also wanted to give room for people to bring their own chairs, which a lot of people like to do.
It's about the existing area.
Yes.
It covers the existing footprint, and people love to go and bring chairs and blankets and stuff and sit behind there.
Because there is sort of a berm rise in the topography.
When I arrive five minutes late, I don't want to have to worry about a blanket or something. I want to find a place to sit.
I've never been there, I've never been there, Council, and when there's no bench seats. I've never been there when there's no bench seats. I get there late in the front row, because most people do bring their own.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of this proposal at all.
Okay.
I love the rustic look of that area. Every bit of concrete you add to City Park.
Is this great?
I know, they sit on the grass, and they blend right in with folks sitting on the roads.
I mean, is the second row a little higher than the first row? Third row's a little higher?
Kind of an amphitheater.
And you get there only from the middle aisle, or can you get there from the side aisle?
You can get there from the side.
There are steps up to them?
This, the path, as you walk down towards the bandshell.
Yeah.
These are just grass pathways between the seats. So let's try to keep it soft, a little bit softer-looking.
Okay, well-
Yeah, there's no steps, it's just an old age.
I like the proposal, but can people get up to them? There's no steps, so if the last, if the last row back is a foot higher than the first row back, how are they going to get up to them? They just step up to them?
Well, if you're, say you're in a wheelchair, or you're a little bit challenged by moving around, you could walk across this concrete sidewalk and then walk up this path, which would just have a slight incline, which gains that foot of vertical increase. So it's all kind of ramped effects, but it's very gentle ramp.
Okay, but the back row is not going to be sufficiently high that you can't step up onto it if you're, if you're-
No, you could, you could walk right around it this way, or you could walk in here.
Okay, so you can go in on either end?
Yes.
Okay.
And the total cost you're proposing for this is?
Well, the-
A thousand is a budget?
The lowest price the junior got for the benches was $37,199. The concrete work and some of the other things we have to do here, some of the grading, probably another $5,000 or $6,000. It's about $45,000.
Is, is the proposal for these permanent benches going to leave the same amount of space that exists between where the bench is sitting out and the stage?
Probably a little bit more. There was some discussion about that.
We bumped it back just a little bit, to keep it a little farther, because some people say they don't, a lot of people don't set the front row. But also, yeah.
The angle, looking up to-
Right. And also, we want them leaving enough room in there for trucks to get equipment in there, bucket trucks to work on front of the bandshell.
And for dancing.
Yep, and for dancing.
It's about 25 feet or something like that.
Is there enough room between rows of benches to allow mowers to go in there and clean and cut grass?
Yeah, that's the idea, yes, mhm.
So I've heard a firm no, and straw poll?
I've heard a firm yes.
Who's the S, Penny?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
All right.
I commend you guys for looking at solutions and then for trying to approve the solutions.
And how many benches do we have? Not these, the old ones?
Probably 150, 175. Yeah, varies. It comes in and out.
But a lot of them are getting pretty bad shape.
They're matching. They require a lot of maintenance, a lot, and they're vandalized a lot. We pulled them out of Lake a few times.
Where do you normally keep them?
Justin would like to have some for his property, he can make the-
They're in the grandstand. Fairgrounds.
Are these things relatively comfortable?
Oh, I like that stuff, too.
We bring them every year, repair and paint them.
Are these things relatively comfortable? Are they more comfortable than the wooden benches?
I'd say they're about the same.
But not, they're not less comfortable.
Except when it's cold out.
They're more comfortable. They're more comfortable. Yes, they are.
But the wooden benches aren't comfortable.
Wooden benches are not comfortable.
I mean, you could bring a cushion and sit on these, is what I would recommend. People don't feel they're comfortable.
Okay, well, let's move on to the next item on the agenda.
So is it okay if we move forward with the purchase and then have it approved at the April meeting?
I think it sounds like we've got a fair majority.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is next steps on downtown master planning process, and we have our esteemed planning director and economic development manager joining us here at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we see this as a continuum of the conversations that we've had in the development of a downtown master plan, and ultimately, the potential of entering into a public-private partnership for a master development agreement for the downtown area. So what we're recommending tonight is a, for the city to engage one of two organizations, either the International Economic Development Council or the International Downtown Association, to provide an advisory panel visit to the community to help us through key steps in preparing and doing some due diligence to get ready for the master plan and a public-private partnership. The advisory panel would accomplish some of the items in the memo for scope of work, which would include a document review to better understand all the planning that has been done to date for the community, what aspects of those could be used already as part of a downtown master plan versus looking at the projects simply from starting from scratch. And I think a key component of this would be technical assistance and advisory services, specifically on the real estate development sequencing process. What are master development agreements? How have other communities used them? What are common pitfalls? Successful strategies and lessons learned from other cities? And then what would be a reasonable expectation on a timeframe for implementation of our master plan through a development agreement? The structure of these types of advisory panels are typically a staff member with two to three economic development practitioners from other communities that have gone through this process, doing some advanced document review prior to their visit, a two-day visit, concluding with a presentation, and then a final written report. Given the scope that we've been talking about with this, that could be approximately an eight to 10-page report with a set of recommendations. And then we see this as beneficial in that it's an unbiased perspective. The people who would be visiting our community would not have any direct or indirect financial interest in our project. The service would be provided by a nonprofit industry association, whose, whose mission is simply to advance the profession, and that this represents a key component of our due diligence and learning that we should do prior to entering into some complex work in the area of real estate development, and a key recognition that other communities have gone before us, and that, that we have a chance to come out of the gate well and strong, and to learn from lessons learned in other communities so that we do this well and do it, do it efficiently. And I'd like to ask Kathy if she has anything additional she wanted to add.
No, I just think this is a really good idea. I've always been in favor of updating our downtown master plans to see what is, what is the, what would be great for us now in 2013 as opposed to what we have in our comprehensive plan today is really thoughts that came from the 1997 plan, and were pretty much carried forward. It's probably time for a fresh start, but it would be good to hear from an impartial outsider as what would be the appropriate steps for us, not from folks who have a stake in the ultimate outcome after we have a plan.
And the ultimate idea is that, you know, in a couple weeks, we're going to have Bruce Poole, Dane Bauer coming back and reporting to us what work they've done already to try to secure private partners, and then asking us basically for a master developer agreement. And this would allow us to know exactly what we would want to put in such an agreement, like you said, to do our due diligence, to really nail down that. In addition to, I think, what you're saying, which is we have the comprehensive plan, we have a downtown master plan, we have the arts and entertainment district plan, we have the sustainable communities plan, we have all these different plans, and how we can work all those different plans into a master development plan.
Or launch off from a new perspective.
Any questions, council members? Yes, Mr. Munson?
How do we make a decision between the two organizations?
Would be based on proposals that they submit, qualifications of the team members that they recommend, the price that they recommend.
So you all would get that information?
We would get that information.
And make the decision?
Correct.
Which you would presumably share with us, right?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
The, what do you anticipate the cost might be for such a service?
The cost, based on some preliminary conversations, we're looking for this to come in under $10,000. The, the range of service can be higher than that, depending on the amount of advanced document review, case study work that they do. This, both associations have produced final detailed advisory consulting reports of, in excess of 30, 40, 50 pages. We're looking at a smaller, very specific topic area, and I believe it could come in under $10,000.
Which I just want to point out to Mr. Munson that you, so you would not be asking for council approval for the specific proposal?
It would depend on the price of-
Depending on the price.
On the final price.
Because anything over $10,000 needs council approval, but anything underneath $10,000 would not, correct?
Correct.
I commend the staff, again, for, for working on this. I think we do need to urgently move on downtown, but I do think we need to do it impartially. My concern would be that we stress the investment, economic component, attracting investment, and not stress traditional planning concerns, only to the extent that, that they can be used to attract and/or discourage investment. I, you know, I'm not so concerned with whether one corner ought to be retail or something else. In fact, I don't think we should even be saying that. I think we need to, to really find a way to attract investment. I've thrown some ideas out, you know, I think that's the key, and to what extent, do physical factors affect that? What other things can we do, rather than static, physical planning criteria? Am I making, yeah, and I think that's, that's where we need to go now. I think we have the talent to address and work with the criteria, only to the extent that, you know, they want to give us guidelines on that. But it's not a traditional spatial master plan, is what I'm saying. And by working for this master development agreement, which, you know, is, is a unusual situation, it would really be good to get some outside input on, on how these things operate. Because I went through the Sora stuff, and it, well, I just want to, it'd be good to get some outside input on that. Yes, I agree. And then if we, if we set something up, Sora's perfectly entitled to participate in whatever, you know, process is recommended.
Any other questions or comments about this?
How quickly do you think this could be done? I think we are, we're going to be studying on top of study, and we're going to be just laboring another time period on it.
Preliminary conversations with each of the two groups would, could have them in, from our decision point, within three, three weeks, to allow for planning of travel of downtown professionals from around, around the country. And then completion of the final report within, within three to four weeks following the visit. So I think this could be accomplished in, in May with a final report toward the end of May or early June.
Any way to speed that timeframe up?
It's possible. It's possible. We can, depending on who we select and what travel distance that they've identified, they're beginning to think about potential panelists that would be a part of the visit, so depending on the travel distance and the timeframes.
Mr. Alshar, you look like you have a question or a comment.
I don't know if I have a question or a comment. I would say to some degree, I'm a little confused. I've read this a number of times, so all we're going to do is consult with IEDC to bring in a panel of folks at this point.
Either IEDC or IDA.
Right, or IDA.
Two organizations. And they would assemble experts who have gone through the real estate process. These would be not just staff of the two organizations, but they would find the equivalent economic development manager or real estate authority development manager from a community that has gone through this process and bring them in to our community, meet with us, and then give recommendations as to direction for us to go on the path of this, what I see as complex real estate development when you get into master development agreements.
I, I thought that that was, in concept, what we were sitting down with Sora to do.
The main difference would be this, this panel would give us some advice on how to enter into agreements with someone like Sora, rather than taking advice on how to enter into agreements with someone like Sora from Sora.
From Sora. So this entity would give us advice on how to enter into an agreement with Sora?
Or an equivalent, not necessarily Sora.
Or an equivalent, yeah, some master developer.
Or not, depending on, I'm sorry, Krista.
To do what?
I think the point is to help in the development of an RFP in order to get a master developer agreement. In other words, we want to know what does that RFP look like in order to put it out there? And if we have feedback from other communities who've gone through this process, I think that's what we're looking for, is what are the pitfalls, what are the advantages, what are the things to look out for, those types of things that we want to know before we jump into an agreement that could potentially commit the city for a long period of time and perhaps with a lot of money.
So, you know, and there's a number of different things sort of floating around here. One is obviously Sora and other entities are having deliberations on a local level with other interested local parties. I mean, that's occurring. There is, you know, a meeting that I attended with HNDP the other week where they had indicated that they had expressed an interest in having some of the downtown alliance and other interested parties coordinate with them to have a crossover of visits, if you will, from other communities, where folks from other communities would come here and sort of do, you know, do an assessment and vice versa. And then this proposal, where this entity would come in, they're not going to assess our area, they're going to inform us of if we enter into a partnership with some entity, how to do that.
They would do a level of assessment, they would guide us as to what are the interests of the city in entering into a public-private partnership for master development of the downtown, what are things that we should strongly consider, points of consideration in our negotiation of a public-private partnership, and what lessons learned have there been from other communities who may have gone through this process and would recommend, if you're going to go down the same path that we went down several years ago, these are things that you should consider and watch out for and guide us through that process. And Sora's, Sora's concept, which that they used in Rowan Boulevard in Glassboro, New Jersey, is the designation of a geographic area, to designate that as a development area, and to enter into a public-private partnership, giving the developer a level of exclusivity of redevelopment for that defined geographic area or those parcels of land.
That are owned by other private local parties.
And I think a piece of, a piece of the process is land assembly and land control. And I think clearly understanding what is the role of the city government in that type of redevelopment activity in the sequencing of real estate development. I don't think that you get too far down the line in that development of a master redevelopment without a level of land control. And those are things I'd like to hear from people who have been through the process before.
I guess for me, somebody's going to have to put it into some type of perspective in comparison to, and I wasn't here at the time, so I don't know, but it seemed like sort of a good plan, and Lou refers to it all the time, is, you know, when, and I don't know where he came from, but when Mr. Palmer came in and basically drew up some things and then came up with some ideas, maybe I'm trying to figure out how that process evolved, and is this process exactly like it?
That's my understanding, in that situation, Cy Palmer was at the Schmackelstube having a meal and started talking with Charlie Sekula, and it sort of, it sort of moved into a chamber-sponsored activity, and that's where the downtown enhancement plan came from.
Sponsored for him to do what, I guess maybe is my question.
He, basically, in that initial thing, what we wound up with was a large map that was sort of a landscape architect's kind of rendering of urban design improvements that can be made, and then a very short, maybe 10-page textual description of what he had drawn. And then from there, we sort of built off that with the A&amp;E District and all those different concepts.
Which were fairly successful. And I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, is what, are we trying to accomplish the same thing through this, through this effort?
I think the firm that Cy worked for is LDR, is a landscape architecture firm, giving some specific recommendations as a consultant to the city, very different from real estate development work and what is being proposed by Sora as a master development agreement. It's, it is different.
In other words, Sora has asked us, they've already asked us for a master developer, they want to be our master developer. Members of this council have said, well, we want to have an open process, we want it to be, you know, we need to put out an RFP. What goes in that RFP? That's what this, I think, is what this effort is aiming to get at, is what do we need to put in an RFP to make it a successful, if we're going to go down that road of a master developer agreement, what's going to make it successful? I believe that's the attempt that we're making here. Any other questions or comments? Any feedback on?
If we do this, and this sounds like a pretty good idea to me, this allows you all to be more knowledgeable and more intuitive about how these things work.
Yes, I believe so. I think it's a level of due diligence, it's not just educating staff, but educating us as a group of the process for complex real estate development, so that as we make future decisions, whether it be with Sora or any other group, that we're doing it from an educated standpoint.
But if we're leaning on that entity to be our professional developer, our expectation is they're going to be professionally capable of doing it already? And otherwise, we wouldn't select them.
I think they're, Sora has been in town, they're one of many firms like them across the country, and that their guidance of us is, has their interest in mind, that there is an advantage for the city to get unbiased consulting and advice, advice that is unbiased and not connected to financial interest in a project.
Especially with regard to an RFP. If we're going to say we want an open process, unless you just want to say, all right, we trust Sora, we'll just give them the agreement and not go through an open process.
Oh, no, I'm not saying I trust any of them.
Well, I think that's the need for having a very solid request for proposal if we're going to enter into a master developer agreement. And I think that's the effort being attempted. Do you have money in a budget somewhere that would be able to cover the cost of this?
We didn't, not identify a specific fund, but I believe that we would be able to come back at least with the identification of the funding source.
And you think you can speed it up?
We can attempt to.
Okay. Do, will this entity be able to sort of, I mean, if they're going to guide us on how to enter into this process, are they going to also place recommendation on what we're being guided into? I mean, to hear master developer, but master developer of what?
I believe that they would, they would help to define that. Master developers typically in RFPs that I've looked at are, is a designation of a geographic area or the designation of specific parcels of land that are underutilized and ready for redevelopment.
Any other questions, comments? I haven't heard from this side of the table much on this topic. You're okay with the pending? How about you?
I'm fine, as long as it doesn't go into an exuberant amount, and they have to come back if it does.
Okay. All right, thank you. Please move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, business assistance, Flying Pie Company, Mr. Liston and Mr. Sargent.
Good evening. We'd like to take you through a proposed business assistance for a restaurant that's coming downtown. Maybe you've seen the signs or read it in the paper, Flying Pie Company is going to be landing at the building 43 South Potomac Street. It's going to be a destination wood-fired pizza restaurant with a centerpiece oven that will attract, though I believe that it'll be a destination restaurant, people will be coming downtown and coming to it. They plan to open up by the end of May of this year. They've started a little bit of a social media blitz, you can do that online if you're into that. They've been making significant improvements to the interior of the property as they go along here, and they have a fairly long lease with the property owner. The owners believe, and staff concurs, that a new facade on the outside of the building around their retail location, their restaurant location, would really improve the streetscape down there, and frankly, kind of reset the property a little bit for the success of their business. They, the goal would be to match some of the existing facades in South, in that first block of South Potomac Street, for example, bulls and bears, kind of clean it up and make it look nice. And the way, one way that we talked about offering them assistance to do this, the way that we recommend is that we do a loan-to-grant situation. We would loan them $15,000 for 36 months. The principal would be forgiven over time if they were to meet some conditions. Those conditions would be to create no less than four full-time and eight part-time new jobs in the downtown at that location, and to maintain for no less than 36 months, months, all these positions. And then they need to, you know, they need to keep the business at that location for at least 36 months, although I believe their lease is for much longer than that. So bringing this before you for discussion and approval.
Question. What monitoring will there be of the facade itself? Are we going to have approval? Are we handing, you know, how are we controlling what the product is for our $15,000 grant? Excuse me, I must take this.
Okay.
Should we wait?
He's either dancing or taking a call.
Hello?
He told me that he might have a call that he has to take.
Hey, Steve, I'm in a council meeting that I took it.
He's excused.
Because I knew an important person was calling.
Yeah.
I just left the meeting. Okay, you're probably confused over what I called about.
Yeah, everybody.
Well, and does anyone else have any questions that they want? Does anyone else have any questions, Penny?
It has nothing to do with the facade, but it did have to do with, was it Marcel's?
Marcel's was there once before, yes, ma'am.
And that's where, it was the helping deal, wasn't it? Did we help? Did we, what was it?
Yes.
Okay, and really, I want you to listen to me. I don't have a problem with this, but I have a problem because of the owner. I'm scared half to death, I do not know what their lease looks like, and this owner has been known to do...
You're talking about the owner of the property?
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to make sure now you're not talking about...
Owner of the property.
Okay.
Excuse me. Why don't you correct me, Lou? Usually you get me. See, you're right on top of it. Anyway, I just would like to be sure, all right, that everything is going to stay as such for whatever time period this is.
Yes.
Because the property owner has been known to hike up those, okay, leases.
The property is owned by 43-45 South Potomac Street LLC.
Oh, I know.
And just for clarity, it's in the name of this LLC.
Correct.
But the principal address for this corporation is Demcor Corporation.
Correct.
Is who represents this LLC and has other holdings in the city.
Correct.
And staff designed this particular assistance to try to help the tenant in this case.
I realize that, but what I'm getting at is that even with 36 months, okay, and seeing, and yes, it could be then forgiven, but that's not to say, and it's still $15,000, John.
I agree.
That's the thing. And also, we've got another new business that's going to be opening up, and I would like to have clarity on that as well. I do know that the city has reached out to give some incentives, and I'd like to know how much that is, too, because again, you know, this was a business that was established, and from my understanding, the business that's going in, they did have another business as well somewhere?
Yes. The principals of the Flying Pie Company have toppings pizza.
Yes, okay, so at least they have their, you know, they're here, and people will, you know, will know, but I would like to know that because...
Staff would like to come back at a work session to discuss the other business you're talking about. We're still working through some assistance with them and...
Correct, because that's, you know, I mean, those people bought that building.
Absolutely.
Okay? And I just think that there should be something there, too.
And we are working with them to define that. In this particular case, and is it all right if I kind of address the council member Brewbaker's question? In terms of that, the owners of the Flying Pie Pizza Company, they have an architect they're working with. It's the same architect that did the old CVS building for the city, it's Rob Goldsack. And he's designed a storefront, it would have to go through HDC approval, and the, to round out our thought process is that we would work alongside the business owners, the HDC, the architect, to make sure that a good product's being delivered, and the business owners would contract with whoever's doing the work, it would not be the building owner who contracts with the people who are doing the work.
I think that's another important distinction, just that it would be the tenants who are responsible for bringing the facade to fruition.
Let me follow up a little bit with Penny. With regard to the contract, I presume you've seen it between the new owner and the owner of the facility, the building?
The contract for doing the work, sir?
No, I'm talking about...
This agreement.
The agreement with Demcor. I just want to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, because I don't have to say why, we can talk about it in a confidential session, but these people are my neighbors, the Canes. They're very good, solid people, and they're bringing something to downtown, and it's going to probably allow us to move forward on another difficult problem that we have been neglecting so far. We don't need to neglect any longer if we have a pizza shop downtown. So I would tell you that I support this 100%.
And then you can see if maybe they want to use the oven that we have somewhere. That was what, $50,000?
That was.
All the city put up money for the oven?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and it was supposed to go into the market house, but nobody knows how to put it together. I'm sorry, I'm off track. $50,000, off track. Okay.
Mr. Alshar, do you have any questions? Just so there's clarity, this entity will be leasing the space from the property owner.
Correct, sir.
And you have seen a copy of the lease between the property owner and this tenant?
I have not yet seen a copy of the lease.
You will see a copy of that prior...
Absolutely, absolutely. Before this agreement is signed.
And the property owner has outstanding debt to the city.
The...
Yes or no?
Well, not this LLC, so I...
That's how we cover ourselves.
LLC's a company. I'm talking about people, property owners.
In terms of having two outstanding loans, there are two outstanding loans...
Are they associated with this specific property?
No.
Okay. I'm fine with it.
Okay, but yes, and in reference to some of your earlier concerns, sir, I think we'll schedule a time to come back. I have met with the city attorney in order to have clarity on how much we can discuss. So I think we could get that on a work session schedule to discuss the outstanding debts.
This is the kind of the issue that I was driving at. I just want to make sure these people are protected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like we have a pretty clear consensus. All right, the moment we've all been waiting for. I'm going to turn it over to our esteemed finance director. We have a council member asking for a break, so why don't we take five minutes to break? Thank you. We are back. And before our finance director takes over, I guess, just to put it out there that we did receive this before the weekend, and I know all of us are taking our time to read it very thoroughly. I certainly have read the introduction and have gotten a big chunk of the way through. But the main goal tonight is to just be presented with the information from our finance director. If you have questions, certainly I would encourage you to reach out to staff. But I think more tonight is for information purposes. Certainly we'll have more work sessions focusing on the budget in the coming weeks. So I'm not asking you to hold questions tonight, but the main purpose is to receive this information from the finance director. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
What I'm going to do tonight is just kind of go through the budget message, which is located in Section 1, Page 1 of your document. I'll go through the first half of that, and then we'll move on from there. Before I get started, though, I'd like to acknowledge some of our staff members who were integral in making sure that we were able to complete the document timely and making sure that we had complete information. We have Michelle Hepburn here today, our budget officer. I think pretty much everyone here knows her. We also have Raina Rose, our senior accountant, who's joining us tonight. Another staff member who was very integral in getting this completed was Christine Klein. She's a staff accountant. She was not able to join us tonight, but those three members were very important. Danny Frye should also be commended for helping us prepare the budget message and keeping Bruce in check and keeping him moving forward. So to begin, fiscal year 13, '14 budget that we're proposing is balanced at this point, and no property tax rate increase has been proposed for next fiscal year. The general fund, which is our largest operating fund, has $37.8 million in revenue. It's a 2.5% increase over the current year's budget of $36.9 million. We are maintaining our current operating levels. We're continuing to operate with less in these difficult economic times. We've done that through cost containment, expenditure reductions, and management of our unfunded positions. We've also, in the last several years, experienced a 6.7% decrease in revenues since fiscal year 10. Our high in fiscal year 10 was $40.5 million, and in fiscal year 14, we're expecting $37.8 million. It's a $2.7 million decrease. We're also continuing to operate with 27 unfunded positions. We'll have 16 in the general fund and additional 11 in our enterprise funds. We held some hope a year ago that property values would begin to recover after the recession in fiscal year 15 as part of the next triennial reassessment. However, we have received information from the State Department of Assessment and Taxation that this is probably not going to be the case. We are anticipating an 8% decrease in the assessable base for fiscal year 15, and that's also shown on Section 3, Page 6. We're basing this information also not only on discussions with the assessor's office, but with information received from the most recent triennial reassessments of areas in Washington County such as Boonsburg, Smithsburg. Some of those outlying areas saw decreases of 10% or more, and we're expecting to see similar results in our next reassessment. The proposed fiscal year 14 budget includes... If you can just turn the page there to the chart. It includes $133.1 million in combined uses of funds or expenditures for all of our funds in total. The general fund is seeing an increase of 2.9%. It's a result of our Safe Speed for Students program that was implemented in fiscal year 13, or 12 and 13. Community Development Block Grant is experiencing significant losses as a result of the federal sequestration and federal budget cuts. So we're expecting a decrease of funding of about $600,000. That's also a result of spending down monies that had been built up over the years and not spent. The capital improvement projects program is increasing from fiscal year 13 to 14 by $9.4 million. We have included monies in the CIP budget for a new stadium as well as downtown redevelopment, and that accounts for the bulk of that $9.4 million increase. Electric Fund is showing a decrease of $4.3 million. That's a result of the loss of some of their major customers, such as Breyer's Good Humor, the Meredith Medical Center moving out of the city limits. Water Fund is showing an increase of $7.5 million. It's a result of their continued capital and infrastructure improvements being done at this point at the R.C. Wilson Treatment Plan and some other larger projects that are ongoing. Waste Water Fund is continuing to remain flat, primarily because they're wrapping up some of their larger capital improvement projects. Parking Fund, we did include a third deck in the CIP fund, and that accounts for the $1.4 million increase to the Parking Fund. Fiscal year 14, we have included monies for land acquisition and demolition as well as for the planning and preliminary design phases of a third parking deck. Monies for construction would be included in fiscal year 15 and out. Another important section that you should really pay attention to when you're reviewing the document would be Section 7 of the document. It's our financial projections. Our five-year projections for the general fund start on Page 2 of Section 7. And again, I can't stress enough the impact of the December 2013 triennial reassessment. We are expecting that our property tax revenue will decrease by $1.2 million as a result of this 8% decline in the assessable base from this reassessment. Additional things you'll see in the financial projections in fiscal year 15, general fund wages and benefits will show $940,000 for an increase. That's a result of a full year for cost of living adjustments or step adjustments, whatever adjustment we determine or decide to approve for employees. In fiscal year 14, we'll then carry forward a full year in fiscal year 15. Fiscal year 15 also includes large growth in our debt service and capital outlay that are a result of some of the larger projects, such as the stadium project. And as a result of the declined assessment that we're expecting and the increases in wages and benefits as well as capital improvements, we are expecting to have a loss of just over $3 million in fiscal year 15, actually closer to $4 million. And that loss will carry forward into the out-years without revenue adjustments of some sort. Which brings me to the next section, which is a budget priority that we have identified for mayor and council consideration. In fiscal year 15, because we're anticipating significant decreases in the assessable base, it becomes very important for us to consider this a two-year plan for fiscal year 15. Critical priorities include the need to strengthen general fund revenues. It becomes very important for us to do that in fiscal year 14. It's not realistic for us to anticipate any additional large reductions in expenditures without service reductions or significant restructuring of the city's public safety operations. At this point, public safety represents about 53% of general fund expenditures. Based on the current revenues that we have in the general fund, we do not have sufficient funding to move forward with all of the capital improvement projects and priorities that have been identified by mayor and council, such as the stadium, construction of a third parking deck, and any major downtown revitalization or redevelopment of the former MELP site. At the same time, we've reached a point where we need to begin restoring pay adjustments for employees. Employees have gone four years without a cost of living adjustment, three years without step increases. We've also been able to manage our insurance funds, any increases to that by not impacting employees, and we've absorbed that 100% within the general fund or within city operations. Other things that have impacted us over the years, we have experienced about $4.2 million in a loss of state and county shared revenue as a result of the budget cuts at state levels. We're operating in the current year with a reduction of $3.8 million in general fund revenues from fiscal year 10. Some of the reductions we experienced in the past from state and county shared revenues were a result where state highway user revenues, we lost significant amount of that. We also lost the county tax differential, which was included in state and county shared revenues. And when we lost those revenues, we did not increase the property tax rate. We balanced the budget totally on the expenditure side by reducing expenditures. In the current year, we are experiencing a small growth in general fund revenue of about $800,000. It's primarily due, as I mentioned earlier, to the Safe Speed for Students program. That additional speed camera revenue is being used to support our public safety operations, which represent 53% of our general fund expenditures. We are expecting that it will increase next year by an additional $900,000 over the current year revised budget. In fiscal year 12, the first year of the current triennial reassessment, Hagerstown did experience an 11.2% decline in the assessable base. And for fiscal year 15, as I've mentioned earlier, we are expecting to have an additional 8% decline in our tax base. Because Hagerstown is so dependent on property tax revenue, it's important for us to diversify our revenues and to strengthen our revenues. We respectfully encourage and ask that mayor and council make this your top priority in relation to the budget for fiscal year 14 and fiscal year 15. Now, I'd just like to touch on some of the bullets provided in the fiscal year 14 proposed budget major highlights. As I mentioned earlier, we are not proposing that there... That we have a property tax rate increase. It's going to maintain the current property tax rate of $0.78 per $100 of assessed real estate values. Tax rate has been in effect since fiscal year '09. Fiscal year 13, projected property tax revenue does reflect a 1.7% decrease over the current year budget, and that's a result of a decline in the corporate personal property taxes that was not anticipated. In Bullet Number 2, where we discuss staffing, we do have a complete staffing schedule for you. It's in Section 1 on Page 35. Currently, the city operates with 464 full-time positions. That includes 204 for public safety, 144 in our enterprise funds, and 116 in general operations. 27 of those positions are unfunded. That number has been reduced from prior year. We have eliminated some positions in the electric fund. We've also filled some of those unfunded positions as a result of our Safe Speed for Students program. We were able to fill three captain positions in the fire department as well as one position in the police department for the speed camera program. And then we received a grant and are able to fund five positions in the police department for police officers as part of the cops hiring grant. For our employee and retiree benefits, we've mentioned previously that we did experience... We're expecting a 12.1% increase in July 2013. That translates into about $500,000 for all funds. To mitigate that increase, the city will need to negotiate plan changes with all four of the unions and employees for employees and retirees. That's something you can probably expect to hear from us in the coming weeks. We did begin union negotiations in the early part of March. Additional increases that we're anticipating are a 5% increase in workers' compensation for the coming year, and we base that on historical trends. We won't have that final number until probably mid to late May. Our employee pensions are also continuing to increase. The Maryland State Retirement Pension System is... The employer contribution is expected to increase from 8.99% to 10%. That translates into about $137,000 next year for all funds. Employee contributions in the state program continue to remain at 7%. That percentage did increase in fiscal year 13 at the beginning of the year from 5% to 7% for all employees. For the police and fire pension program that we have, we are expecting the employer contribution to increase from 11.29% to 12.2%, and that also translates to $86,000. The employee share remains the same at 7%, and it has been that same amount since the program's inception, I think back in 1998. In the general fund, we have included a $400,000 lump sum contingency to fund any COLA step increase or restoration of unfunded positions or any employee benefit adjustments that the mayor and council may approve in the coming fiscal year. This $400,000 lump sum adjustment would most likely only cover a mid-year adjustment beginning in January. All other funds include similar contingencies for their employees, and citywide, we have set aside $540,000 for these contingencies. Mayor and council have been very adamant that they want to do things for employees, and in showing that in good faith, we did approve $1,000 flat payment for employees in December of 2011, as well as a second payment that was just approved last month, and we paid out to employees in June. Both of those payments were funded solely from fund balance and earnings generated from expenditure savings. The mid-year pay adjustment that we've included in fiscal year 14 will of course be a full-year pay adjustment in fiscal year 15, and that has been included in the projections in Section 7. Utility rates at this point for the electric fund will most likely go down simply because the wholesale power service agreement has decreased for us beginning in June of 2013. At this point, the city has the lowest electric rates in the county. And in accordance with the 2009 approval of a five-year rate schedule, our water rates and wastewater rates are expected to increase next fiscal year. Water increased an average of 5% per year for city customers and 6.5% per year for customers outside of the city limits. Waste water increased an average of 5% per year for inside city limits and 3% for outside customers. The fiscal year 13, '14 budget does not include any changes to the parking rates for our Parking Fund, although we did receive recommendations from Richmond Associates in 2012 that we should include recommended increases. We have not included that for fiscal year 14, something that would probably require future consideration by mayor and council. We're not proposing that the refuse service fee be increased in fiscal year 14. For Maryland State Highway User revenues, the proposed budget does include $720,000 for the coming year. That's been allocated in our Capital Improvements Project Fund for primarily pavement preservation. That's an increase over the prior year's amount of about $350,000. This amount could change. The state has not finalized their budget. However, we feel pretty confident that $720,000 is a reasonable number or a conservative number. Additional information we received from the state indicated that we would be able to increase our state aid for police protection allotment from $516,000 to $750,000. That amount has also been decreased over the last five years and has been a huge impact on our general fund operating budget. For our Community Development Block Grant revenue, we are expecting a 9% decrease in the federal grant entitlement for fiscal year 14. the federal grant entitlement for fiscal year 14. We're expecting our entitlement to be about $600,000 for fiscal year 14. That's a 40% reduction from fiscal year 11's high of $1 million. Section five, beginning on page three, has detailed information on our CDBG program as well as funding information. City operations have been adjusted by reducing CDBG-supported staff from 5.8 positions at the beginning of fiscal year 11 to 2.5 in the current year to compensate for the 40% decrease in funding that we're receiving for CDBG. Our Safe Speed for Students program, in fiscal year 14, the revenue is estimated to be just under $1.6 million, and total direct operating expenditures are estimated at about $650,000. Revenues for this program are budgeted entirely in the general fund and must be used for public safety operations. Any revenues that are not used for direct operating expenditures are used to offset our public safety expenditures, which total $18.3 million in fiscal year 14 and $1.7 million in capital improvement projects that support police and fire operations for fiscal year 14. As I mentioned earlier, these revenues were able to fund additional police officer position, as well as purchase a new police officer vehicle for the speed camera program, and the reinstatement of three captain positions within the fire department in the current As part of the budget priority to diversify and strengthen our revenue base, staff has included information regarding the stormwater management fee. We did not include funding or revenue sources for this in our financial projections. However, staff does believe that Hagerstown should consider implementation of this fee in fiscal year 15. This process does take about a year to implement it. A plan and a study would need to take place. Staff would recommend that Mayor and Council consider this fee in the next few months, and the fee would be used to cover costs the city currently incurs related to stormwater management, as well as any mandates being placed on city governments by the state Maryland legislation. We would probably want to include this on a work session sometime in the next couple of weeks, a couple of months, so that we can give you some additional information, and Rodney and I will bring that to you in a few work sessions. We are anticipating a bond issue of $4.2 million in the current fiscal year, and that was just recently approved. The bond issue is for a combination of vehicles in the general fund operations, as well as capital improvement projects in the water and wastewater funds. The proposed budget reflects a plan for an additional bond issue in 2014 of $6.2 million to support general fund and utility operations. Currently, the city does have a AA- minus rating from Standard &amp; Poor's and a AA3 minus, or AA3 rating from Moody's. We need to be aware that the bond rating firms are focused, they focus more scrutiny on municipal governments and their financial condition, especially, they especially look at the strength of the revenue base. Because the city relies very heavily on personal property taxes, they are going to look at us to ensure that we are diversifying and not just increasing property tax rate, but diversifying our revenue base by creating new revenue sources of some sort. We do expect that we'll receive upgraded ratings as part of our 2013 issue later this We're expecting that at the end of fiscal year 14, our unassigned fund balance will be $8.5 million in the general fund, which is about 23%, or 2.8 months of general fund We are required by our policy to have a 10%. GFOA recommends an unassigned fund balance of 16.7% or two months of general fund expenditures. We are expecting that our general fund, unassigned fund balance, to remain healthy and strong despite the revenue losses that we've experienced in the last few years. General Fund Agency contributions appear on section three on page 55. At this point, they reflect a continuation level of funding. We also have not included new monies for any requests that came in that were not included last year, such as the Dulman Black History Museum request that recently came in. It's something that we would need to consider once we discuss that in later work sessions. The new parking deck, or the third parking deck, is included on page 173 of section nine, and it's included in the parking fund. The budget reflects $1.4 million for property acquisition and design in fiscal year 14, as well as $8.5 million in fiscal year 15 for construction. Based on current projections included in section seven, parking fund revenues are not sufficient at this point, or expected to be sufficient, to fund debt service for the parking deck. This will create a need for the general fund to transfer and subsidize the deck for this non-city source. Section seven on page 26 identifies the shortfall that we're expecting, but it does not show a subsidy from the general fund. We do show that there is a needed revenue source in the parking fund to be identified. Section nine on page 108, in the capital improvement program, we have included monies for the demolition of the MELP, the former MELP site, and we've already discussed that in prior sessions. We are anticipating receiving $300,000 in state funding for a portion of the $1 million that we have budgeted. The remaining $700,000 will come from city bond funding, as well as the city's CIP fund Bullets 22 through 24 include some of the capital improvement projects that we have for our vehicle replacement program. The last few years, we've deferred vehicle replacements in response to our loss of state and county shared revenues. We have phased some of that back in, certainly not at prior levels, but we are working towards getting it back, getting vehicle replacements back into our capital program. CIP project number C0854, which is on page 117 in section nine, includes $1.5 million for downtown redevelopment. The money would be available to provide city support for the relocation of the Board of Ed, administration offices, or some other downtown revitalization project that has yet to be determined by Mayor and Council in the future. We've also identified a funding source of this of $1.5 million in bond proceeds. We've included CIP project for the construction of a minor league baseball stadium. Funding has not yet been determined for this project, and it could total $30 million or more, depending on Mayor and Council's decisions related to the location and the scope of the project, as well as any parking infrastructure needs. The amount of state, county, and private funding allocated toward this project will also determine the amount of city funding required to build the stadium. It's located on page 51 of section nine. Our pavement preservation program in recent years has been significantly reduced as a result of the loss of the highway user revenues. However, we are beefing that up a little bit in fiscal year 14. That is included in CIP project C0025. It's on page 49. We are expecting to receive $640,000 in highway user revenue for our pavement preservation Additional projects include the bridge repair program and our Frederick Street culvert repair as part of our infrastructure improvements in our streets. Parks improvements include upgrades to the Potterfield pool. We hope to add 55,000 in waiting pool amenities at the Potterfield pool. We're utilizing 63,000 in state program open space funding, and the remaining $8,000 would come from state funding. The remaining $8,000 in state funding would be combined with 7,000 in general fund money to provide these upgrades, as well as additional shade structures around the pool's deck. We've also included monies for George Washington statue and other parks improvements, such as multi-use paths and other neighborhood parks improvements. For our neighborhood projects, the city continues to provide program, staff, and financial support for our neighborhoods' first program. We've included $59,000 in funding for this program. In the coming months, the city will be initiating a new marketing effort. It's called Live Hagerstown, We Love City Life, and that program is going to be used to promote city neighborhoods, and it highlights the advantages of living within the city and encourages homeownership in city neighborhoods versus rental properties. In fiscal year 14, the budget does include $50,000 in CDBG funds for sidewalk accessibility improvements, $24,000 for community partners incentive program. That program will offer down payment and closing costs for income-eligible home buyers. The budget includes a partnership with the Commission on Aging by providing $18,000 in CDBG funding for home repair grants for seniors. And HNDP continues to receive free office space from the city, along with $24,000 from CDBG, as well as $50,000 in general fund support. Community development block grant-supported expenditures include $460,000 for housing programs, $350,000 for housing rehabilitation, as well as $30,000 for single-family home energy emergency repairs. That was included in the $460,000. In addition, we have $250,000 included for public facilities improvements. Those types of things would include our neighborhood parks project, as well as our sidewalk and handicap improvement projects. We've also included $105,000 in CDBG funding for public services, and as I mentioned earlier, that can be found on page three in section five. In our Economic Redevelopment Fund, which is included in section five, we've reflected $665,000 in expenditures in fiscal year 14. Those expenditures include projects such as the former Midtown Hotel and the property located at 4353 West Washington Street. We've included some new incentives in the Economic Redevelopment Fund. We have $75,000 in support of an incentive for apartment unit reductions, as well as $100,000 for new programming targeting the rehabilitation of properties and unit blocks located in the downtown area. The wastewater fund capital improvement projects includes the purchase of vehicles, collection system rehabilitation, citywide collection system upgrades, and grinder pump replacements. In the water fund, we've included $13.4 million in fiscal year 14. $9.6 million, which is the largest portion of that, is for phase four of the R.C. Wilson Treatment Plan improvements. Additional monies are for the continuation of our meter replacement program, water system SCADA improvements, and water main replacements. We've also included $300,000 for Brickner Water Treatment Plant improvements. The electric fund has $400,000 in capital improvement projects in fiscal year 14. Those include circuit upgrades, electric service upgrades to the new Buster Elementary School, as well as telemetry equipment and electric service to the Nolan Drive Boys and Girls Club and vehicles. Now, if we look on page nine, sources of general fund revenue, this chart is kind of telling. It shows the difference, it shows the 2.5% decrease in revenue growth that we're experiencing for fiscal year 14 when compared to fiscal year 13's general fund budget. It's a $900,000 increase. It's made up of several different things. The first would be a decrease in property tax revenue. That was a result of our corporate personal property taxes decreasing unexpectedly. $370,000 increase is offsetting that for our expected increase in state aid for police protection. In our intergovernmental revenues, we have $300,000 included for our COPS hiring grant. And then, fines and forfeitures, where we have our largest increase, we have about $100,000 included for our Safe Speed for Students program. The last thing that would be important to point out would be transfers from other funds. We have $280,000 included. $250,000 of that is a water fund dividend that we will be coming back to you in the coming weeks to discuss, or coming months. On the expenditure side, we're showing a 2.9% increase in expenditures. We're from $36.7 million in fiscal year 13 to $37.8 million. The bulk of that increase, $1.2 million, is in wages and benefits. It's a reflection of a full year of a cost adjustment for employees, as opposed to a mid-year cost adjustment from fiscal year, I'm sorry, it includes a mid-year cost adjustment as well as a 12.1% increase in health and other insurance increases, retirement increases. So, it's the mid-year employee cost adjustment, as well as benefits increases. Contracted services has an increase of almost $400,000. That's a reflection of our increase in revenue for our Safe Speed for Students program. As our revenues increase there, the amount that we pay to our contractor to provide our billing support will increase. The bottom of section one, page 10, you can see an allocation of our fiscal year 14 general fund budget expenditures by function, and you can see at the very top, public safety. We have police at $11.9 million, a 31% of our general fund expenditures, and fire is at $6.4 million, it's 17% of our general fund expenditures. The 30-year comparison of the real property tax rate for the city of Hagerstown, the county, and the state is also shown on page 11. In 1984, the city's personal, or real estate tax rate was .656 per $100 of assessed value. The current proposed rate for fiscal year 14 is .788, a change of 20% in just that 30-year The county's tax rate has increased by 23%, and the state's tax rate has increased by 33% in that same period. Now, the general fund's capital investment since 1997 is shown at the bottom of page 11. In 1997, the city spent about $1 million on capital outlay. You can see that we had a peak in fiscal year '08 of $1.5 million, and it has decreased down to a proposed $800,000 in fiscal year 14. We've been able to balance the city's budget during these economic times, when we've experienced reductions not only in our assessable base and our real estate revenues, but our state and county shared revenues, primarily on the expenditure side through wages and benefits, and also on the capital side here, as shown in this chart. But deferring some of those capital projects, we had a low in fiscal year 10 of $400,000. You can see we're going to be playing catch-up. In fiscal year 17, we're expecting $2.1 million. So, anything that you're deferring is eventually going to catch up with you when it comes to capital, capital outlay and equipment. At the end of fiscal year 14, we are expecting to have $18.2 million in general tax-supported bonded debt outstanding, and $80.2 million total bonded debt, and that would be the amount included for our all funds. The 12-year increase in outstanding debt is $51.9 million. As part of the federal sequestration, we could see some impact in our debt service figures. As part of our 2009 bond issuance, we did have some Build America bonds in there, and with this issuance, the city is being reimbursed by the federal government 35% of our total interest paid. The federal sequestration could impact this by reducing or eliminating that 35% reimbursement. And the impact on all funds is listed on the bottom of page 12. In the general fund, we would see about $100,000 in additional expenditures that were not expected in future years. Citywide, we would have about a $207,000 impact as a result of a loss of this reimbursement of interest paid for our Build America bonds. The city's debt affordability ratios are listed on page 13. At this point, neither state law nor the city's charter places any limitation on the amount of general obligation debt the city may incur. However, the city has really, has strictly adhered to a debt policy, which is included in part of our fiscal policies, and it's also included in your budget document. While the city issues general obligation bonds for its utilities to help lower the interest costs, this debt is also considered self-sufficient. interest costs, this debt is also considered self-supporting from utilities user charges. Only nonutility general obligation financing bonds are considered to be tax-supported, and they're included on this chart. At the end of fiscal year, for our fiscal year 14 proposed budget, we're expecting that our debt service ratio would be at .7%. We're required by city debt policy to be at 10% or under. Debt per capita is expected to be at 454 based on the current projects that we have in the CIP. We're required by our debt policy to maintain that ratio under 1,000. And this is strictly for general fund tax-supported debt. This does not include our enterprise funds. Now, our general fund debt as a percent of our general fund operating revenues is at 5.7% or expected to be there. We're required by our policy to maintain 10% or under. The next pages include charts and information related to revenues and expenditures that we'll go into more detail in in the coming weeks at budget-related work sessions. They also contain summary information related to the different sections contained in the budget document. Be useful for you to read through that information before going through the rest of the document. Of course, if you have any questions, I'm available to meet with you one-on-one. You can send me an email or give me a call. Michelle Hepburn is also available to discuss anything within the document with you. At this point, do I have any questions? There will be questions, I'm sure.
And I'm just kind of reviewing our draft agendas for the near future and trying to think how we can chunk this. That's an educational term, by the way. And I'm thinking that for the next meeting on the ninth, that perhaps we should review sections two, three, and four. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Does it sound reasonable to you? It'd be the section on government funds, which really just doesn't really have much. But then the general fund and the enterprise funds. Focus on those, basically those two main sections, the general fund and enterprise funds.
Okay. We have a draft schedule from what we had done last year, and I believe we focused on the CIP funds first, but we can change that if you'd like and focus on the general fund as well as the enterprise funds. What we'll do as well is we'll look at our schedule from last year to see what time was allotted to that, to see if those will all fit into one session.
Sure. Well, we don't have to make a decision about that now. I think if... Yeah, we'll consult and come up with the schedule.
We'll get a draft schedule to you within the next week.
So just keep doing your homework, everybody. And we'll get that schedule out to you. Thank you so much. I know this was a lot of work for you and the staff, and I really appreciate everybody's involvement. Thank you to the staff who are back there and the ones who are watching at home. Very complicated. I know these are tough economic times still, and even though there may be parts of the economy that are bouncing back, we're still feeling the effects of the low property values. I definitely hear the call for diversification of our revenue sources, and so that should be something that we're all thinking about as well. And anyone have any questions or comments right off the bat?
I too would like to thank Michelle. And her staff. This is maddening, I guess, if you do it all day long, five days a week.
Indeed. At this point, we will move forward with the city administrator's comments. He is not here. He's tending to family business. And so Michelle has been at the reins. Do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments at this time, other than to say, Bruce, we'll be back next week.
Thank you. We'll move on to council comments then. Mr. Munson.
I just hope that everybody had a good Easter, good holiday.
Mr. Alshire.
I have a couple of things. First is, we were invited to attend the State of the Library today at their temporary and cold location out behind the Washington County Detention Center. Couple of things to note. One is, they're behind is, when you develop a project downtown, I know folks are anxious to have it open and accessible, but you know, just about everything you do downtown, whether it was the courthouse or the library, university, you name it, they are not easy venues to redevelop, and they take longer typically than a greenfield site. So it's good to hear they're progressing. One of the things I had offered was, you know, that our staff continued to meet with them, and as they sort of get to the finish line here, if there's any list of items, you know, where we can assist with the county and the city and their contractors and sort of delegating to get done to make sure things go as smoothly as possible. I think we need to make sure that we're doing that. However, I think we need to lean on the county and their contractor to be sort of the lead entities that sort of assign those things. And it's good to hear they'll be bringing all temporary facilities back to their downtown location versus keeping them open in their current temporary locations, like the one in the north end, you know, up the street and out at the detention center. The next item is in response to some comments regarding the Phase Two Environmental Assessment Report that we received. I know that the paper did an article on it last week, and we're still probably digesting some of that. But, you know, for me, in reviewing some of that information over time, one of the items that occurred during the appraisal process was that I believe one of the property owners, or at least one of the property owners identified, was not accepting of the proposed appraisal, wanted to go and get their own appraisal. And I think it's good that the city sort of did it due diligence on this Phase Two. You know, it tells you the facts. It doesn't dictate opinions. Simply, you know, the results are what they are, you know. And as one council member, when I read into the Phase Two report of the groundwater analytical summary of just one of those locations tested, that the MDE standard of a component like diesel components is 47, and one of the groundwater tests tests at 45,000, yes, that makes me have some cause for concern and hesitation. Those are numbers that we have a responsibility to look at. And I would welcome a reappraisal of those properties, given the results of this report, for those that didn't accept those numbers in the beginning. The other item, as you saw, the county did reduce its excise tax. I think that has a direct impact on our budgetary, you know, obligations to ensure that new growth, you know, fairly pays its way, so to speak, you know, as development occurs. And you know, I just heard you talk about groundwater management fees and, you know, improvements to sidewalks and street systems that utilize excise tax to do so. And if we are going to be hamstrung by that change or that ever-changing capability of the county commissioners, just as all the other towns are, then I think we need to have a serious relook at that. You know, we negotiated that APFO in good faith, that there would be a set revenue stream associated with that that would be consistent. And, you know, I hearken that change, if you will, that is outside or out of our hands to make, no different than in this budget document tonight where it outlines that the state has increased the pension amount. You know, we don't have any hand in that process, and we need to ensure we have some control over those things to control both our revenue and expense side. Also, I know the EDC, we're meeting next week, early next week. They're going to hear from stakeholders on those priorities. I don't know if we've sent them anything formally.
We did.
But I know that we had a presentation on some items. So, you know, if we did send them something, I would like to see that list. I have jury duty starting that morning, so I may not be able to attend. And that will be a new experience. The other thing I noted earlier as it relates to the dog park, I wasn't apt to talk about it last week, is my dog Hager passed away Tuesday. So last week's meeting, when everybody was sort of coming and talking about dogs, that was a little difficult. He lived a long life. The next item is delinquent accounts. We talked about one here this evening. And what I would like to see, you know, and I saw the note from staff that, you know, April 1st is here, and start notifying folks that are delinquent on their electric utility accounts for termination. You know, I'm not certain what specifically that other jurisdictions do, but for me, I want to equate it in these two parts. The first is, if we are proposing within our budget a rate increase, let's say on water, and that rate increase is 3%, and let's say that 3% equates to $300,000, and we are carrying a delinquent, a number of accounts that are delinquent equivalent to some portion of that $300,000 increase, what we are doing in effect is raising the rates on people that are paying to cover the carrying cost on the folks that aren't. And so for me, I think whether it is our water and sewer accounts, our electric utility accounts, or frankly, our loans and debts that we have out to private property owners, we need to ensure that the citizens and the customers that are paying are not carrying that debt load indefinitely. We need a clear and concise and candid process to that, that is timely in its termination and enforcement. That's something I'd like to have a discussion on at some point. The other issue as it relates to budget and increasing revenues, I sent everybody a copy of that synergies committee report that was done in Frederick County among those various parties. And, you know, the amount of savings that was realized through that process, and I would encourage folks to consider development of that type of committee here in Washington County to do a very similar exercise. And then the last item that I have to comment on is the Board of Ed. I went to the Greater Hagerstown Committee meeting on Friday morning where there was a brief debate among members of Greater Hagerstown and the Superintendent Wilcox. At the end of that meeting, there was also a very clear article on the Board of Education's sort of multitude of moves that it could take that was published on Sunday, which I thought was very well-written and very well-researched. And I would only note that from the comments Friday and from that article on Sunday, that it is more than clear and should be more than clear to the citizens that this analysis by the Board of Education has gone on for much longer than a month and a half. That the city, as a body, put forward, you know, some facets of what it would be able to offer. And in my review of those comments on Friday and of the article on Sunday, you know, I would encourage the Board of Ed, and I think they made the vote today, to take the step that is best for them to take. But I got that feeling of the hospital all over again, where I don't believe, from review of those comments and review of that article and the position of the Board of Ed, that there was a sincere attempt to locate downtown. And I don't know that the Board of Ed ever made that sort of gesture. They had folks, you know, say, hey, show us what you can offer, you know, do an analysis. But I would say for at least the last six to eight months, they've likely been giving much greater serious consideration to the Allegheny site for all of the reasons appropriately outlined in the article on Sunday, and for all of the positions that they have defended with groups like Greater Hagerstown. And so for me, my preference would be to focus on those things that we can collaborate on, like the School for the Arts and the library and, you know, the other educational components in downtown and around our city that make sense for both of us, and leave it at that.
Thank you. And just to let you know, I do plan on putting the APFO and delinquent utility accounts and outstanding debts on our future agendas. Mr. Brubaker.
Yeah, APFO slash excise tax. It's the revenue and the APFO, and I strongly agree with. We need a staff paper on that to work from, on the implications of what the county did. And tonight, I just want to talk about the Governor O'Malley came to the Maryland Legislative, Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee last Wednesday, and the main subject was highway revenues. We did thank him for the increases in police aid, for the $15 million that he included for municipalities that he did not include for the counties, and for fixing a glitch in his late arriving transportation bill, which inadvertently cut the municipalities. We got that fixed in the General Assembly. But I will say that the committee expressed its concern that the full funding, even with the $15 million issued, the full funding is far from restored that we had in a program that goes back, it has its roots 70 years ago for state aid to localities, which don't have the diverse and broad revenue base that the state has, that it's not restored. Neither the governor nor the General Assembly restored those highway revenues, and now despite a transportation bill, which is going to yield about $600 million. The governor, a task force, one of the General Assembly's devices is being set up, and the governor promised MML representation, and, you know, we strongly urge that that could be a vehicle to get a permanent restoration of our funding. The $15 million only brings us up to 50% of what we got before 2009, I believe, before four or five years ago. And, you know, we have a strong position that we want that restored to its historical dimension with inflation, like most of the other transportation programs are now, and written into legislation, not written into the annual goodwill of the governor and General Assembly. So those are our goals. He promised to work on it. He promised to be sure MML is represented on the task force, which isn't clear from the legislation, which is still evolving, by the way, but as it stood last Wednesday. So we did that, and I did suggest that if ramping up might be a solution, if there are some current revenue needs that aren't there, I suggested we start at the 50% and maybe ramp up, as long as it was written into the legislation, wasn't a part of it, to reach the full level with inflation in an out year. So those are some of the things that we talked about. The governor expressed that he would like to be able to restore it, that at that point last Wednesday, that it wasn't going to get changed in the General Assembly, that it would have to take place in a future year, if indeed we can bring it off.
Thank you, Marty. Ms. Nye.
Yeah, I had made a comment last week because I had a citizen who was concerned about trash being put out early. Let me just tell you, if we don't soon hire someone who is going to be an overseer of trash, the city's down the tubes. We've got trash everywhere. I went up Franklin Street on Saturday, and I've never seen so many bins and trash bags. And the location, the two locations that I were given when I went and checked those locations, they hadn't set them out. And I went by the person's house, and I said, oh, okay, I'm at the right location. And I said, well, maybe they heard me on TV when I said where the area was. I'm not joking you, Franklin Street coming into this town unless somebody goes around Hagerstown... Hagerstown, that's what you see. You see it on Washington Street coming out of town. John, do you know when we're going to be hiring somebody?
I signed the registration form pretty on Thursday, I guess, so I believe the person will be on board with us.
Well, all I can say is, if, being hired part-time, he'll probably leave us in a month, because I don't know how whoever catch up. I really don't. I don't know how he's going to catch up. Also, in coming through town, because now my, direct route to my father's, there's been a lot of illness in my family the last three weeks, I noticed where the old Union Hall was at, right here, catty corner from the fire station, that we have now a collection of a lot of adult people. A lot of adult people who are standing there congregating, smoking their cigarettes, and I'm thinking, okay, now what's going on here? So I had put a phone call in, I think to John it was, and he was probably out of town. And I thought, all right, something's happening. Well, I understand that now we have another source for the ones who are homeless. And of course, this building is owned by another person that I'm sure it doesn't matter what, and here we go, right on the streets now again. And when is it going to stop? Because from my understanding, this entity also has got another location, and if they merge, and I hope not, it's going to be really bad news for Franklin Street. I mean, it's bad enough, but it's, you know, it's right down here, right, a catty corner, the Union Hall. He wouldn't know where. It is a huge, beautiful building. It is right up from the Menonite, where was it? Is that where it was at? I only remember it as the Union Hall, but I mean a congregation of congregation. And, you know, I could really digest it if it was a minister on the street preaching to a congregation, but what I'm seeing is not that, okay? And then we have parole probation down on the other corner, which is just another beautiful site. So they pick it, you know? And what is this, Destination Hagerstown? What do you think people view it as? And I don't want to be, okay, but I'm saying fact. This is fact. So anyway, I went down to the new businesses, because my hopes are that once summer gets here, I can go to these places that are down and around this area, and I can say to them, okay, I'm a council member, and if you have any concerns, and it's not getting to where it needs to be addressed, please call me. So I went down to the new pizza place down here on Good Friday, and he kind of looks at me when I go in, and I said, I'm, I'm a city councilperson, and I said, how's it going for you? And he says, well, you know, it's slow. And I said, yes, it would be, because it's just started, and there's been so many that has been in and out of here, you know? So people have to get to feel of it. So I go back the next day, because it's very good. And I said, here's my card. If you do need somebody to talk to, I didn't have it with me that day. And he said, well, what do you mean, talk to you about? And I said, anything in general, if you have a problem here on the street, whatever. He said, well, you know, somebody, individuals tried to steal the copper pipe alongside of the building while they were still in business, open for business, 10 o'clock at night. And I said, well, thank God, they didn't get, they didn't get to do it all. They had been it down. But again, okay, where is it that it connects? You know, this, and they could say, hey, you know what? But I think he realizes that this could be a good location, and I think that it will be, but I don't know. I mean, addressing all of it, I think we all need to put on police suits and then call the police once we have them, because it's not good. And John, I need to know, what is going to be going there at Barnyard Books? Have we have it, that it's narrowed down now as to what the business is going to be?
At the...
Barnyard Books?
Um...
Across from the library?
Yes.
That will be opening up?
That's not the...
Not yet?
It hasn't been lined clearly.
Okay. As well as the housing up above, too?
That hasn't been...
Okay, I'm just curious. After the library meeting today, I just thought, oh my, please don't do something off the wall that is really going to make that library feel that it made an unfortunate move. But anyway, that was it.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to mention the, the blue ribbon on my lapel and that Ms. Nye have is to recognize that this is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and, and Mr. Munson has one, too. I have more up here for everyone to take and put on your car antenna. The, the good people at Safe Place, the Child Advocacy Center, were there last night with a lot of public safety employees putting blue ribbons. So you might see some blue ribbons around town on the parking meters or on people's car antennas. So just be aware that it is Child Abuse Awareness Month and that individuals can make a difference in the lives of children. Also, I was at the State of the Library meeting today and wanted to thank the library Board of Trustees for putting that on, and greatly look forward to their grand reopening, hopefully very soon. And also, I wanted to give a shout-out to the Maryland International Film Festival, which will be occurring right here in downtown Hagerstown, starting with a screening of the Oscar-winning film, Argo, at 6:45. We had a press conference today, and I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Tony Mendez himself, along with his wife. And glad I got to see the movie over the Easter weekend for the first time, and thoroughly enjoyed it, and look forward to all the excitement and energy that the, the film festival will bring. It's scheduled to run over three days and will screen 50 films from around the globe. All the screenings will take place in downtown Hagerstown at the Maryland Theater, the Bridge of Life, the Academy Theater, all from April 11th through the 13th. Opening night will include short films as well as Argo, and a special surprise will be revealed. So be there or be square. And that is all I have for this evening. Thank you, everybody. Meeting is adjourned.